Good evening, everyone. This is the Groton Board of Selectmen's meeting for Monday, December 18th, 2017. We'll begin by going through our agenda. We'll begin with announcements and that will be followed by a public comment period, where members of the public have up to three minutes to come to the microphone and ask us some questions. If they're easy, we can answer them. If they're not, we will get you answers and/or put it on a future agenda if it wants. That'll be followed by the Town Manager's Report, where he will be discussing our agenda schedule, continuation of annual license renewals, discuss and take a position on open meeting law complaint filed by Alan Hope concerning an executive session held on October 10th, 2017, to discuss and take position on an open meeting law complaint filed by Alan Hope against the Town Manager, Mark Hadad, for forwarding an email to members of the Board of Selectmen, followed by an update on the Prescott School lease negotiations, and then finishing his report with a review and approving the calendar year 2018 annual goals and objectives for the Board of Selectmen. That'll be followed by a public hearing at 7:15 for two liquor license applications to 128 Main Street LLC. At 7:30, the Audit Review Committee will be presenting findings of the operational audit to the Board of Selectmen, and at 8:15, an annual report of the Lost Lake Watershed Advisory Committee. Then we have other business, Selectmen Liaison Reports, and we have no minutes to approve this evening, followed by adjournment. Just as a note, the Selectmen will not be meeting next Monday, Christmas Day, nor the following Monday, New Year's Day. Our next regularly scheduled meeting at this moment will be Monday, January 8th.
And that's when the Town Manager will present the FY what budget, 19?
FY 19 budget.
The next fiscal year.
The next fiscal year.
Is that meeting gonna be upstairs?
Yeah, we'll do it upstairs like we did last year.
Okay. So, under announcements, I have one. Does anybody else have any? The announcement I have is I was meeting with the police chief the other day and never noticed the yellow signs at the police station. And I said, "What is an online safe zone?" Apparently, we've discussed it in the past. So I asked him what it was, and somehow it slipped under my radar. So I have a little notice to read to tell everybody what it is. "The Internet provides many opportunities to sell and procure goods and services. This also has opened a new means for the unscrupulous to prey on consumers and sellers. We have all heard horrific accounts of online meetings resulting in scams, injury, and death. The Groton Police Department is pleased to offer an online safe zone in the parking lot at 99 Pleasant Street." That's the police station. "The premises are monitored via video equipment 24/7. We have designated two parking spots as online safe zones. The decision to participate in an online transaction lies with the individuals. The Groton Police Department cannot authenticate merchandise or oversee transactions. However, we can provide a safe, monitored public location to conduct business." So if you want to meet somebody and trade tickets for sporting events, or concerts, or that shirt that you just had to have from someone, that's a great place to do it. So that's the announcement that I have.
How about others?
Public, well, public comment period. Seeing no comments, Town Manager's Report.
Mr. Chairman, if you go to page four in your packet, you'll see a list of the remaining licenses that the Board of Selectmen needs to approve. I would like to go through that with you. I'd ask the Board to approve a common vicual license for Country Butcher and Deli, Kenneth Dimmer's manager, hours of operation Monday, Wednesday, 10 to 6; Thursday, Friday, 10 to 7; Saturday, 10 to 5. River Court Residences, Sharon Amadon manager, located at 8 West Main Street for CBL, hours of operation 24/7. The Natural Market, doing business in the natural market, Joan Reardon manager for CBL, hours of operation Monday, Saturday, 9:30, 6:30; Sunday, 11 to 5. Salt and Light Cafe, Josiah Coleman manager, 159 Main Street for CBL, hours of operation Monday through Friday, 6 to 4; Saturday, 7 to 4. I'd ask the Board of Selectmen to approve those licenses, and I will turn the last license over to Selectmen Peas.
So moved?
Second.
Further discussion?
Yeah, question. So, River Court, and I think I understand why, they're allowed 24 by 7 CBL. Is that a special dispensation because of who they are and what they do?
Because of who they are. You did the same thing for Seven Hills.
I just may not know.
Because it's a 24 hours operation. They need to be able to serve food 24 hours.
So it's kind of not applicable to the bylaws as a result?
No.
One other que-- well, go ahead. Let's vote on this. All in favor?
Aye.
Before we go to Barry, I noticed that Nebbs, they have a cafeteria. How come they haven't had a common vic renewal?
I don't know. I didn't know that.
I've seen you remember talking about that in the past.
Yeah, they usually come in, so you--
Three years ago, when the gentleman at Danant, I don't remember the name, was not doing it anymore, but it's been a few years, so.
Just want to verify that they're not--
We will. We're looking for it.
Josh, I think we didn't quite go with the nays, or opposed, or abstained in the last vote. Ms. Pine may have a--
All in favor?
You said you called it all out.
Yes, four, all opposed. Abstaining.
Don't you have to announce the vote?
It's unanimous.
You didn't say, you just said, "All in favor."
I'm sorry, that's unanimous. It's been a long day. It's unanimous. Thank you.
I just thought something needed to happen.
I'm usually pretty good about that. Thank you. I'm gonna turn over the Groton Exchange to Selectmen Peas, as I recuse myself from this discussion. Not in the vote.
Yeah, so earlier, I sent out a plethora of factual information regarding this item. Does anybody have any questions or concerns they'd like to raise based on that data?
At 5:00?
Yeah, I realize it came out late, and I apologize.
Sorry, couldn't read it.
I didn't even know I had it.
I skimmed it, but I thought you were going to be saying something to help us understand it.
Yeah, I read it too. You want to explain?
So the situation here is that the force of selectmen have the ability to restrict licenses, restrict permits, CBLs, to any property that is not up to date on its taxes.
Is it also possible to delay this?
They're not meeting again, Jack. Until after the first year, you gotta deal with it tonight.
I would've recommended that otherwise, because I didn't get Town Council's response until today. And clarifying with Donasky, we have latitude in that, because we ultimately get to make the decision one way or the other, and we have the ability to determine whether or not there are extenuating circumstances for the arrears, and whether or not we feel like, well, whether we feel that those circumstances give us the ability to grant this license and still be in compliance with the town bylaw.
Well, it was just brought to our attention at 5:00, two hours before we vote. Did we not know this?
It was brought to my attention last Wednesday, and it took three days to get the information together, and then this morning to get the Town Council's opinion on how to interpret the bylaw, which is very poorly written, and it actually has an error in it.
Just for the Board's information, I brought this before the Board, because there's a bylaw that says the Board of Selectmen cannot issue licenses to anyone who owes taxes to the town abroad. Because of that, the Selectmen need to make a decision whether or not they want to grant a license, and that's where we are.
Yeah, I'm just wondering why this couldn't have been brought to our attention earlier, unless we just found out about it two hours ago.
We were trying to work out the situation with the owner prior to bringing it before the Board of Selectmen. That's why.
So it's a town bylaw that we're--
Yes.
It doesn't prohibit it?
It doesn't prohibit it. It authorizes you to--
So let's read.
To not do it.
To not issue.
So the license that's in question is a CBL, common vicual license.
Correct.
I recall that we approved the license for Dunkin' Donuts in that location last week.
That's the challenge, yes.
So is there other food being sold there that--
There's two entities, absolutely. There's two entities, the Groton Exchange and Dunkin' Donuts, that both sell food. Both need this license. One entity's already been approved within the building, and the other entity actually applied December after our meeting. The permit application came in after our meeting last week, so it was received last week.
And so you just shared a bunch of information with us? Do you have an opinion?
Yes, so, of course, I do have an opinion. So I went through the process of trying to understand, was there a distinction between the tenant and the building owner? And legally, there appears to be. I went through this understanding, was there a lease between the tenant and the building owner? And we received an affidavit indicating that there was an at-will arrangement of lease. I wanted clarification on the bylaw from Town Council as to whether we were required or we had discretion in the matter, given extenuating circumstances. I personally feel that there's extenuating circumstances here. I did receive a personal commitment from the individual that once the situation was cleared up, we would receive tax in arrears in full, and he asked for our, he asked for the Board's, you know, discretion and approval of letting this business continue as it is until such time as he's able to make that happen due to the circumstances of the building.
I'd like to offer a simple, Mark, is it in our discretion to grant this? And do you have the authority to remove it if things are not paid?
We can schedule another hearing before the Board to do that.
Could we ask you to--
You can't direct me, only you can do it. You have the licensing file.
But could we ask you to, if we grant this, could we just ask you to follow through and let us know if there's a problem?
Correct.
I move that we approve this common vic license.
I'll second.
Further discussion?
I was going to ask if we could approve it for less than that entire 12 months.
You can grant it as long or as short a period of time as you want.
But your motion includes--
The assumption that Mark will follow through on this and let us know quickly if there's an issue.
The issue being if taxes remain--
A payment issue. Just trying to get this done in a few sentences as possible.
But they've essentially said they're not likely to be able to do that until April.
Correct.
So--
So that's when I'll follow up with the Board in April.
And then we would have, if we wanted to go through the process, we would have to file, we have to file for a public hearing and start the process to consider not revoking the permit or not, or revoking the permit, which is within the purview of the law.
But if we only granted it until the end of May, and then it hadn't been resolved, we wouldn't have to go through that process?
You could grant it to the end of the year pending review at the end of May.
So let me amend my motion, if I may, that we approve this permit and authorize and ask the Town Manager to manage this situation to the first available resolution, and to notify us if it looks like there will be difficulty in achieving resolution.
Motion's been amended.
I'll second the amendment.
Further discussion?
Is it not easy, though? Easier to Becky's point to grant a six-month and then come back and re-discuss it, rather than--
It might be, but these things are fluid and have some changes, and I think Mark understands, Hope understands, the standard is resolve this thing, and let us know if it can't be resolved.
I do.
And that absolves us of having to track it and having to come back and say we need a one-month extension and--
But if it can't be resolved, what is the process formally that we need to--
Public hearing by the Selectmen to revoke the license.
Yeah, we need to call for a public hearing.
It's not that big a deal.
So, the amended motion, do you want it to go through?
Just as amended.
There you go. We have a motion, it's seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, the Groton Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Monday, December 18th, 2017, at 7:15 PM in the Groton Town Hall. Selectmen's meeting in First Floor, 173 Main Street, Groton, Mass., to discuss and consider two liquor license applications submitted by 128 Main Street LLC, with Warren Francis named as manager, for one inholder's license and one on-premise all-alcohol restaurant license for the premises located at 126 and 128 Main Street, Groton, Mass. Public hearing notices may be filed. All interested parties are invited to attend. I will call to the Board's attention two things that you need to be made aware of, the hours of operation. They are requesting hours of operation 7:00 AM to 1:00 AM for the Groton Inn license, and 11:00 AM to 1:00 AM for the Forge &amp; Vine Restaurant License. I believe the applicants are here.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Good evening, sir.
Attorney Brian Acation.
Hello.
I have an office at One Courthouse Lane in Chelmsford, Massachusetts, and with me is Warren Francis, who also goes by Wadi, who is the proposed manager of the two licenses that will be for you tonight.
Good evening.
How you doing? 128 Main Street LLC purchased the property at 128 Main Street in Groton, and they have, have you seen by their beautiful work, have rehabbed the Groton Inn, and are constructing the restaurant Forge &amp; Vine at 126 Main Street. And tonight, we're here seeking an inkeeper's license for the inn and a restaurant license for the restaurant. We've submitted all the documentation to the town. I believe everything's in order, and I will say that the manager has extensive experience in running restaurants, bars, since 1985, and has graduated from BU and has a master's degree in hospitality management--
Hotel administration.
--hotel administration from Cornell University. We also have with us members from Majors Hotel Group, who operate eight hotels throughout the area, and they're gonna assist in the operation of the Groton Inn as well, and they're here if need be, to address any questions that any of you may have.
All right. Questions on the Board? Becky?
You just said an innkeeper's license and a liquor license, but I believe what we see in our materials is two liquor licenses.
It's called an inholder's license for the inn itself. That basically allows alcohol to be served throughout the facility, to the rooms and everything else. That's the inholder's license. The all-alcohol restaurant license is for the restaurant, Forge &amp; Vine Restaurant. I just have one clarification, that for the restaurant, there is a deck on the restaurant. I suppose you want that included in the--
Yes, in the application, I highlighted, it has the deck, there's a patio, and there's a connected tent that outside functions may be held at, that we are requesting to be part of the license.
But it appears to me that both of these are labeled retail alcohol or beverages license application. Is that correct?
The ABCC has different types of licenses, restaurant, hotel, tavern, inholders, and they're all retail licenses. It's just the classification when they review the application.
I see. I noticed that on the applications, it said that there was an attached list of investors, but we didn't see that.
We have all of the documentation in the office that goes to the ABCC. There's a lot of sensitive financial information on that, and we do not release that to the public.
I see.
If the Board wants to see, we'll make that available to you. We're very sensitive to that information.
Makes sense. I understand. So I understand the restaurant is separate and needs a liquor license, like restaurants do.
Yes.
In the inn, is there gonna be another restaurant or just a bar, or what?
There's a bar.
Correct.
And there's, you know, for a banquet hall, et cetera. And that's why we're seeking the earlier license time for brunches, so, you know, someone may have a mimosa with their brunch. That's why the time would be earlier.
Did I hear 7:00 AM?
That's the requested time.
Took a great time--
Took a great time for a mimosa drive.
Is there a problem with that, John?
We should get one of those here at the Town Hall.
I'm headed to France. What do you think I'm gonna start?
I heard, I had people, I had a discussion with people this morning worried about marijuana coming to town, and I'd say, "Don't worry about it. We got Munk and Bloody Marys at 7:00." So I have no questions. Actually, I did. So you'll serve alcohol to the rooms, is that correct? It's part of this license?
That's part of the license.
So throughout the entire hotel, basically?
And I believe on the application, I had labeled, there's a courtyard, et cetera, that, the entire structure of the building, courtyard, et cetera, so you can have an outdoor fun, if you have a wedding, you can have a cocktail hour outside, et cetera.
Selectmen have to specifically license every area within the facility where alcohol can be served?
So I suppose we should ask. I heard that there might be the ability to have cocktails in the front porch, is that correct?
The front porch is also included in--
Because we'll get asked about that, so we should make that clear today.
I also see under citizenship, residency, and background of the proposed manager, where it says, "Have you ever been a manager of record of a license to sell alcoholic beverages?" You've said no to that.
That's correct.
Okay.
There's a technical difference between being on the license as a manager and managing a restaurant. From my understanding, talking with Wadi, he has not been on the license as a manager, but he's managed many restaurants and bars.
Have you been tips trained?
I've got my card right in my pocket.
And anyone, and anybody that comes in contact will be tips trained, any employee of the Groton Inn.
I gotta ask the question when I see no, that's the first question that popped in my mind.
Policy of the Hotel Group as well, that all employees, anybody serving, will be tips trained, fine. Put them all through that training as part of their onboarding?
Very good. Further questions on the Board? Seeing none, motion? Want to do them both in one motion?
Yeah, why not, right? I move that we vote to approve--
Hold, can I interrupt for one second?
Absolutely, please.
This is a public hearing, Mr. Chairman. You may want to ask if there's any public comment.
I do apologize. You are correct. I forgot it's a public hearing, another--
And don't we have to close it and then vote?
Well, let's see during the hearing if there's any questions. None? Motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing is closed. Motion on the licenses?
I vote that we, I move that we approve the two applications, one for 126 Main Street and one for 128 Main Street, for both an inholder's license and an on-premise alcohol license.
Motions are made.
The hours of operation, as requested, the manager has listed in the motion, please.
So amended.
That was 7:00 AM to 11:00, or was it 1:00?
7:01, 11:01. Okay.
Can I just interject? Just according to the application, the ABCC may have, they've updated their application recently, and under Section 12, the license is a hotel license, not an innkeeper's license.
Okay.
Just the technical language of it is a hotel, so I just want to--
That's fine.
Just in case they ask. I just want to make sure.
The application that goes in will say hotel.
Okay.
Aye. Very good. So motions are made and seconded. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? So that is unanimous. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
A little forward to those morning mimosas.
Mark, pull it in.
When, what's the opening date?
You want to update us on the opening date while you're here?
I'm sorry.
You're still on, you're on track for when for opening?
April 30.
April 30th.
He said May.
Soft opening, April 30.
Okay.
Yes. Very soft.
Very good. All right, well, good luck with the project. It looks great.
So, Mark, we have this question sometimes, how many licenses are we allowed to give out? I mean, we added another, we've added three in the past year.
Yeah, you still have 11?
I think we have about 40.
Yeah, I think you still have about nine left to give.
Nine left, so we have room--
That's on premise. Off premise, you have three, and all three of those are granted.
Yes. So we still have room for restaurants to come to town--
Yep, absolutely.
And they can have a full, open liquor situation, so.
Mr. Town Manager?
Mr. Chairman.
We have a couple minutes before 7:30, so would you like to get back to your Town Manager's Report?
Sure, I'd be more than happy to. The Board received, or actually, the Board, yes, the Board received an open meeting law complaint filed by Alan Hope concerning the executive session held on October 10th, 2017. The complaint is very, very similar to the complaint that the Board received about violating the open meeting law on October 23rd. I talked to Town Council. Town Council agreed with that, with my opinion on that, and he is recommending that the Board take the same, similar stance that you took on the October 23rd violation. If that's the case, I will draft a letter that is very similar to the one that went out on October 23rd, on the October 23rd violation, and I will send that out.
Questions on the Board? This is on the second complaint. Seeing none, any motions to the effect of whether you believe we violated or did not violate the open meeting law?
I'll make a motion that we formally respond by regarding this as similar situation to the first complaint around October 23rd, and that we find there was no violation, and ask the Town Manager to respond on our behalf.
I'll second.
Motion's made and seconded. Further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
That's three in favor of the motion. The motion passes with two opposed.
Mr. Chairman, the other open meeting law violation is against me as the Town Manager, saying that I disseminated an email to the Board of Selectmen that contained the thoughts and opinions of one member of the Board. He's saying that I violated the open meeting law. So here in this public session, I'm saying I did not violate the open meeting law. I ordinarily send out information to the Board of Selectmen on a regular basis, so I will be sending a letter that you have contained in your packet that says I did not violate the open meeting law, and that'll go off to Mr. Hope and the AG. That's all I have to say on that matter.
It didn't allege that Selectmen Menugian violated, or it was just you?
It alleged that I violated the open meeting law.
Did we get a Town Council opinion on that one?
Yeah, the Town Council drafted the letter that you have in your packet that I will be sending out as my response.
What did he say?
That as a--
An individual, there's no, individual can't violate an open meeting law.
Thank you.
It's in the packet?
Yep.
The packet's big, so there's a lot of data.
The packet was over 600 and something pages this week.
Page 16 has the draft letter from--
Thank you, Barry.
We also did, kind of, it's not directly related to this, but when that email came out, we talked about it in executive session, and that was captured in the minutes, and that was why it was released with the minutes as an attachment.
So it's a little strange, because I think we all recognized that there was a violation, and it wasn't by Allison, and I think Mark is usually pretty careful about not violating the law also.
I tried not to violate the law. I wonder if that'll be the headline in the Herald?
So I guess we don't have to vote on this, right?
I'm sure I will.
Because--
You don't have to vote, because it claims against me.
And we had acknowledged that we were aware of the situation--
Right.
--that it was a violation, and we discussed it, and our remedy was to release that document in conjunction with our minutes, so.
So I will be interested to see what the AG rules on this, because it does sort of open up a potential loophole, which I think we have, in my awareness, been scrupulous about not using.
So anyway, we don't have to do anything? You're just notifying us that what you're doing?
The letters on page 16 of our packet.
Mr. Chairman, at 7:30, Kevin Brogan of the, he drew the low straw during the meeting of the Audit Review Committee, and he is going to present the findings of the audit. And I know he's very excited about that. Right, Kevin?
I am. I always enjoy, I was volunteering.
I like your tie.
Thank you.
Well done, sir. Well done.
Can I push camera?
Good evening, Kevin.
Two spirits in the room now.
Good evening. Good evening, good evening. My name is Kevin Brogan. I'm a resident of the Town of Groton.[1703.83] My name is Kevin Brogan, I'm a resident of the town of Grattan, I live at 25A Blacksmith Row, and I had the pleasure of serving on the municipal audit review committee this past year. The purpose of this presentation tonight is formally present the results of the recent municipal audit to the Board of Selectmen and the town residents. The final report has been posted to the website by Mark, all 180 pages, this is two-sided. We've also prepared a forwarding statement from the committee to the Board of Selectmen, a couple of pages that basically is the committee's delivery statement in regard to the audit and its findings.
We have copies here, don't we, Doc? For anybody that wants a copy of the forwarding statement?
And I would just say that the contents of the forwarding statement very closely mirror what I have in the presentation here tonight. I'll try to be concise in my remarks to allow time for discussion and questions. A little bit of background about our work, the Town of Grattan Municipal Audit Review Committee was appointed by the Board of Selectmen in July of this year with the charge of overseeing an operational assessment that had been recommended to the Board of Selectmen by the Sustainable Budget Committee. This committee consisted of members of the Board of Selectmen, Finance Committee, School Committee, Personnel Board, and two residents at large. Specifically, it was Anhee Foley, John Kane, Marlena Gilbert, I think is here, Allison, Bud Robertson, Jack. Mark, I don't know if you were formerly a member of the committee, but he was.
I was just, came to all the meetings because I was excited stuff.
And did all the work, and me. So that was the committee. And the audits, the intent of this audit was threefold, that we would retain a consultant to conduct a management and operations study that would identify, number one, the strengths and opportunities of the organization, number two, to assess the allocation of personnel, monetary and equipment resources throughout the town, and number three, to make recommendations that would improve the organizational effectiveness and efficiency of town services. We began our work by issuing an RFP to a number of consulting firms whose core competency related to the conduct of municipal operational assessments. We received four responses from that RFP, and we unanimously selected a firm by the name of Matrix Consulting Group. Matrix collected information in a variety of ways during the course of their work, including staff interviews, an anonymous employee survey, and an anonymous survey of the community. The results of the community survey, detailed results about the community survey can be seen in Appendix B to the report, the results of the employee survey can be seen in Appendix C of the report. I was reviewing the report earlier today, and I noted that one line said that with respect to the employee survey, Matrix stated that the staff of the town overwhelmingly view the town as a good place to work. So I just thought that was worth noting. And then, starting on page two of the report, there is a detailed description of the methodology that Matrix used in doing their work, in terms of obtaining information in the early phases of this report. Basically, Matrix compared Grattan to three things, its understanding of best practice, given their work in this area, number two, industry standards, and number three, to a set of comparable towns that were selected in conjunction with the committee. Eventually, a draft report was prepared, and Mark circulated that draft report to department managers and provided them with an opportunity to review and comment on the report before it was submitted, and most department heads, I believe, did in fact submit comments. It's small, but on the bottom of the page, it notes that the fire department was not included in this study because they had a separate study going on focusing on the fire department, and the regional school district obviously was not part of this assessment as they also had their own assessment underway. By the way, I mentioned Appendix B, I mentioned Appendix C. Appendix A is, you might, is a detailed profile that Matrix built that is a profile of all of the town departments that they studied, org charts, staffing levels, et cetera, et Community perceptions as gathered through the community, confidential community survey that they conducted. Matrix found that town residents, found and reported that Matrix residents are generally content with services provided by the town. In particular, the fire department, police department, library, and transfer station all receive very high quality ratings by town residents. The planning, building, permitting, and country club received the lowest overall quality ratings from town residents, but it should be noted that all of them received an approval rating of over 50%. The survey also indicated the majority of residents felt a desire to spend more on our schools. Interestingly, while the report showed, eventually, Matrix pointed out opportunities for improvement with the highway department, the community survey showed that residents are very highly satisfied with the work of the highway department. Matrix conclusions regarding staffing, spending, and efficiency. These are some of the more notable findings perhaps that we thought we would extract from the report and call to your attention. Matrix noted that the police department is adequately funded and may have surplus staffing capacity compared to best management practices. The library, they observed that the library is quite generously funded compared to peer libraries in comparable towns, but also noted that this town values the library quite highly, as indicated through the community survey, and uses its survey, services much more than libraries in comparable towns. Another notable finding that we wanted to call out was that Matrix observed that while the country club has shown significant improvement in recent years and is in fact nearing break-even financially, Matrix points out that there is a need for significant investment, including a marketing campaign, a branding awareness campaign to increase membership, and a five to 10-year capital plan would be well advised to determine the type of investments that would be needed in the country club in the years to come. With regard to the DPW, Matrix pointed out that operational, there could be operational efficiency if the DPW implemented an effective work order system and an inventory control system. And I think Mark may be able to, there's, may have already been work done in those regards.
We've already implemented the work order system, it's up and running.
There are numerous other recommendations in the report. A summary of the recommendations can be seen on pages two through five, department by department, and a detailed listing of all of Matrix's findings of strengths and opportunities for improvement can be seen in Appendix D of the report. In general, Matrix reports no major variances from best practice or operational standards observed at comparable towns. In general, based on this report, the committee's sense was that the Town of Grattan is quite well-run from an operational standpoint.
All right, that's enough of the Mark Haddad Day thing, with the employees loving it here.
That won't be a headline in the Herald.
The report does cite strengths, which we should leverage, and points out areas for improvement which should be addressed. Recommended next steps by the committee, we believe the true value of this effort, both financially and work-wise and otherwise, will best be realized if the report becomes a living document that drives concrete action going forward. We recommend that the items in Appendix D, in particular, the opportunities for improvement, be addressed with departmental action plans by each department, and we recommend that Town Manager and Board of Selectmen monitor performance against these plans and integrate those goals into individual performance goals, and these plans should be presented to the board in regular review cycles until all items have been addressed or dismissed. In conclusion, on the whole, the committee believes that the report accomplished its objectives, and that it offers significant value, both of the suggestions that it contains, and for the validation of Grattan's standing compared to benchmark towns and industry best practices. The survey suggests that we, this town, is delivering services that are highly valued by our residents.
It's a very good report, and I know you all worked hard, and I worked with you at the beginning of this process, and then turned over the reins to Allison, thank you for doing that. I think this was a very important exercise, and while you have certainly given us an overview of this, and we can ask some questions this evening, I think we're going to need to set up a separate agenda item for mid-January where we review the recommendations, and I think that the advice that you gave us in terms of setting up the implementation of those things at a department level is a really good idea, and that if we want to not follow through with any of the recommendations, rather than cross them off the list and see which ones remain until they're dismissed, I think we should review them all and decide if anything should be dismissed out of the gate, to be honest with you. However, that's up to the rest of this board, in terms of making that decision. But I know you all did a lot of hard work, and it's very much appreciated. Comments?
Sure. So first of all, all kidding aside, I think this report reflects very well on the way the town is run, and hats off to you, Mark, because I think it reflects well on.
Thank you.
You and a lot of what you've done. I want to note that there are some references to a survey in here, and we should take the survey for what it is. It's a survey delivered electronically off of primarily our town website as a link. Note that it is not representative of the community at large, just as examples, half the respondents, 46% of the respondents said they went to town meeting last year. So you can't have, I think there were something like 500 or 600 respondents, and half of them said they went to town meeting, half of our people, half of people in town don't go to town meeting, we get 300 people, 400 people in town meetings. So this is a very biased set of people. 65% of the people that responded to the survey said that they have children in our schools, there are 4,000 families in our town, it just can't be that 65% of them took this survey. So let's be careful about the directional, or sorry, the decisions we make off of this survey. It's good information to have, but it shouldn't be considered a vote.
What did you say, that 65% of the respondents said they had children in our schools?
Yes.
Okay, so 65% of those that responded could have children in our schools.
65% of Grattan households don't have.
What he's trying to say is not statistically valid survey.
Oh.
It's an informational survey for guidance, but not statistically valid survey.
Yeah.
Which is the same thing I've said many times about Grattan surveys, so.
About all surveys. It's just, it is a valuable thing, it has value, we shouldn't say, the people have spoken, we should spend more money on schools because of this survey, you can't say that. Similarly, with the library, you know, with the library, it says that we, the library is very well-funded, but it says that the respondents to this survey think it should be well-funded. These are, these are the respondents to this survey that think that, they're not necessarily the town at large. I don't mean to call any particular attention to the, to have a value judgment on the library as an example, but we just, we can't say it's okay to fund the library because these survey respondents said it's okay to fund, that the library should be strongly funded, it should be for other reasons. So that's about it, other than the monitoring of the recommendations, I would encourage the public to stay on us, to make, take value from this audit, and make sure that we, we do our job with regard to monitoring these recommendations, because they are the things that will make us better.
Thanks, Jack. Becky, anything?
I was impressed with this report, it just, it's so thorough, so comprehensive, the data's all there, and so anyone who questions anything about it can go in and find the answers, and it was very impressive to me, and I think your committee did a good job.
Great. Barry, anything?
Yeah, so were any of the recommendations based on that survey data? Did any of the information that came as recommendations in two through five have the survey data as part of the decision-making analysis?
Not to my recollection.
I don't believe so. I think it was based on their observation, their discussions with the department heads, their observations of the, they went physically to various places, so I would say no, I think it, the survey is more for informational purposes, and I think the committee decided they wanted it done that way.
I think our committee took, paid more attention to the survey than Matrix did. I think our committee talked about the country club, for instance, and said, you know, this has got kind of low results, we should be thinking twice about the country club and about what we should do, and the survey had valuable perspective on the country club, but I think, as I said, that we paid more attention to the survey results than Matrix did, and that's to their credit.
Anything else, Barry?
Not for now, thank you.
Allison, anything to add?
No, I think it was a, it was a great working group, the 7:00 AM thing, I don't know about, but it was a great group with great, you know, results, I think there's a lot of information in here that merits, you know, multiple reviews at different levels. I think it, it starts to kind of push us in the direction of answering some of the questions, kind of through the strategic process in terms of, you know, if everything, if residents are generally happy with everything across the board, on the one hand, that's fabulous, on the other hand, there may be opportunities to prioritize different things based on limited resources and such, so I think it's a great first step, and we have a lot more to do.
Sorry, I have one follow-up, I apologize.
Sure.
As I, as I read through this, the first draft, and I apologize, I haven't completely dissected the final draft, I don't recall seeing any future thinking. In other words, what's changing today, what, you know, I mean, when this started in July of 2016, I'll tell you right now, the town's a different place than it was a year ago already with different things that have come in. Was there any future-proofing baked into this? Was there any discussion about where we're headed and how these, how these ideas align with what is evolving in our town?
So I have an answer for that. Anybody else on the committee? What's that?
I'll let you go first.
I didn't see this as a strategic effort, it was an operational assessment of effectiveness of the departments. There are little hints of strategic suggestions, but this was not a strategic look forward, where are we going, what should we do, long-range look. It was really an operational effectiveness assessment of our current town operations.
Best practices and comp groups, really.
But it certainly has great groundwork by reviewing the audit for you and Allison to be working on the strategic plan, which is outside of the realm of the charge of either that committee or of Matrix's responsibilities. Is that a fair assessment?
I agree, I sat here before this meeting commenced and was listening in on your meeting earlier, and I thought that there's two documents that I'm aware of that may have value to your strategic work. This document, the operational assessment, and I also dusted off the Sustainable Budget Committee report.
Yeah.
That was done, that I think, I hope we don't let, collect dust, I think there's very important, high-level recommendations contained in this report.
And also, you did footnote during your presentation that the fire department was not included in this, because the fire department had its own assessment and audit done, and that I think that that's important, that at some juncture in the very near future that this board have the chief come in to discuss the final recommendations and findings of that report, but also that is very important for you guys to use in the course of the strategic plan. So, Marlena, I see your hand up back there, if you have a comment?
I, thank you. I'm probably going to be a very unpopular person after I say what I'm going to say, but I have to say it, so I apologize ahead of time. So I guess I was put on the committee as a school committee member, so I'm assuming my perspective was expected to come from a school committee member. So when I looked at the audits that we did in our school district, we had a very strict R and D, just like the municipal did, but I do feel that the deliverables felt short, totally voiced in the summary with that summary, so I figured I wanted to own that piece. I'm a little bit upset about the fact that the fire department wasn't audited. I would, would have liked to have seen some sort of benefit to them not being audited, perhaps a discount from Matrix because it is a large department and they didn't audit it, they got the same amount of money and didn't do the job. As a comparison, again, because of a school committee member on this board, our sped department was also audited by Dusty very extensively, but the town did vote to audit all departments, and that's exactly what the district did. I just feel as a school committee member, sitting on this board, that there was a differential in, in, in the level in which the audit was held, a different light, a little bit, just because of the different similarities, the differences with the sped department and fire department. Now, and that's, you know, I understand I was late to this party too, so that's kind of difficult for me to kind of play catch-up, which was also an aspect, but I just feel that all of the deliverables weren't there as what I read in the RFP, and I guess. that all of the deliverables weren't there as what I read in the RFP. And I guess, and I don't think that it was upheld to the same level as what I'm doing right now within the district. And that's all I wanted to share.
Fair enough. Your comments are appreciated. Thank you. Mr. Lewis?
I think the report was well-done, but there wasn't anything mentioned about the elderly and what is going on there. I don't know if that was supposed to be deleted or not, but it sure is a big controversial situation, and I think it should be, or it should have been.
There's a section on, there's a section on the council on aging on the services offered and how they compare to other departments. So there was a, what this was, was an assessment of how does our town's delivery of service compared to other towns, and are we doing the same kinds of things that other towns are doing? And so in that sense, our council on aging was reviewed and was compared. We certainly, there was some discussion about the building of a new senior center, et cetera, but it didn't go deep into those things to analyze, should that be done, shouldn't it be done? That was not the intent of this audit. It was really comparison to other towns.
You know, it seems to be quite a controversial thing.
Sure.
Throughout the town, and it should be addressed, I think.
Yeah.
Mr. Lewis, I will point out that this is an operational audit, looking at department by department, comparing to other towns, and really not making an assessment on whether or not we need a new senior center, okay? That is an argument that needs to be made and has been presented to town meeting, based on the condition of the existing facility and what the belief of that committee, the senior center committee, and the town manager and the selectman believe should be brought forward to town meeting. And we're working on that. But looking at it in terms of staffing levels, how many people they service, and things along those lines, I believe that was looked at, was it not? So that was the purpose of that, okay?
Yep. The senior center portion starts on page 80.
Yes. Thank you for your comments. Connie, do you have something?
Actually, I have two questions. I just might go back to what Jack said earlier, but could you tell me how many people took the community survey?
I can't answer that.
I have to check.
And my second question is, were the controls in place to prevent multiple individuals from responding?
Matrix did cover IP addresses.
In perfect control, but as good as can be done at this level of survey. It was, the survey was a secondary request that we had after, after we kicked this thing off. Mark, you spent, what, $2,500, I think?
$2,500.
To get this done. So we really wanted to get a sort of a benchmark of the town. So, you know, we got what we paid for, really, at the end of the day. It was a reference point. Just trying to get you the number of total voters, total people that took it. I'll have to get that to you, Connie.
Okay, I was just curious, because I was listening to your comments regarding, you know, 46% went to town.
522 responses received.
That's what it was. Thank you, Barry.
Page 120 of the package, I think, page 118 of the audit.
Okay, thank you.
Very good. Anyone else have any comments relative to this? Bud, do you want to try that?
I just want to add, we didn't talk much about it here, but one of the biggest areas we looked at was comparing all of the departments financially to our head count wise to other towns. And if you go through each one of these in town hall, I mean, you know, each one of them says, "Better than the town, better than the surrounding towns, better, better." So what we found out was that our town basically has, in addition to being most effective and efficient, the townspeople, although like we've talked about, people may be a limited sample, but when you look at the town compared to the, I think there was seven?
Seven.
Seven comparable towns, which out of that seven, six out of 14, we used 14 for salary surveys, et cetera. There was six of those that married right up to it. So it was a smaller sample, but still a very good sample. It showed that we were better than most of those towns when you looked at headcount. And I think part of that has come over time. If you think about where we were four years ago, I mean, we put in quarterly reviews, which the accounting department with Mark has put in to make sure we watch how we spend money. We put in different financial programs. We put, changed the way the board of selectmen and the fincom and the finance department and town hall worked together. I think all of those have added an overview that says, "Let's make sure with the sustainable, sustainability, that we've, we've now got a town that looks, has, but now has better information to manage the business going forward." And I think what you're seeing because of what we've done over the last few years, the whole town, and the fact we have good managers running the departments, because you don't get good reports without, I mean, good results without having talented people in town hall and in the field that know how to run their groups. And I think that's what this report says. So I think, I think, you know, this report is what I would have expected. Maybe surprisingly, you mean a little bit better, but I think that's a good indication. The town, based on what Matrix said, and I believe is a well-managed town, both financially, and it gives good services. And I think that's something we should be proud of as a town, that in fact we need to build on it, but it's not like we're coming from way behind. It says, "We have a good town. We should be proud of it. Let's see how we continue to drive it forward."
But can you just clarify? You said, we're, it shows, the headcount shows we're better, but you don't mean we have more people?
No, I mean, if I look at this, it says.
How's better defined?
Better means we're less.
More efficient.
Doing more efficient.
We do the work.
If you look at this, it says, town manager's office runs with less headcount. Town accountant runs with less headcount. Treasury runs with less headcount.
So I wanted to make note of that.
Assesses, so the whole point was, as a town, the admin functions compared to, compared to the towns in this comparison, we run with less headcount.
They get the work done.
Yeah. And all of that, we come out, for those who did the survey, said they also liked the results of what we do. So I think that's a good positive for the town.
One thing worth noting, and that sort of on its face would conflict with that, but necessarily doesn't when you dig in, is on the police department. It was noted that the police department may have excess capacity. That's not because we're overstaffed compared to other towns. It's because there was a, and correct me if I'm wrong, guys, but there was an observation that on some of the work units that we do, we spend less time than other towns spend on those work units, and we have a little surplus time available to either expand on doing those bits of work, those types of work, or to assign that work elsewhere. But on a per-officer basis, officers per capita basis, cost per capita basis, we are, we are dead on with the other towns.
And that's based on current population?
Yeah.
Current amount of buildings and things along those lines.
At the time that they looked at it.
At the time they looked at it. And that's very important to note.
Yeah. So it suggests there might be a little extra capacity to absorb some additional work, but it does not suggest that we have too many police officers for, for the size town that we are compared to our benchmark towns.
Any other questions in the public? I guess the next steps in, this is just my perspective, obviously, as I pointed out earlier, is to put this on for some point in January to do a detailed review of the recommendations, and certainly hoping that you're taking some of these into account already, that you find priorities marked in formulating your budget for the upcoming year.
Well, like we said, you know, the DPW has already instituted the work audit system, the country club general manager, we did have a five-year capital plan already in place. He's working on expanding that to 10 years. So we are looking at it. Instead of, instead of putting this on the agenda for, for January, if I may make a suggestion, Mr. Chairman, that we send out the audit results back to the department heads and ask them to come back with a plan on how to implement any of the recommendations that are there, and then have the board review it. For example, when we received original comments, I know the land use director, for example, went through the recommendations, said, "We're doing it. We're looking to do it," and so on and so forth. I think that would be more beneficial to the selectmen.
So could you ask the department heads then to respond in writing to the recommendations?
Yes.
So then we can, you know, compress them into one larger document and then compare those to the recommendations made by Matrix?
Yep.
And then we can take that from there? Does that seem to make?
Yes, they wrote the amendment that the departments wrote a department full action plans. And I was going to mention that when we talked about our own goals, that seems like folding them into our goals to have those happen. It's a good idea.
Barry?
Is it not incumbent upon us, from a process point of view, forgive me, Allison, to agree and accept the action plans presented within the report prior to some action being taken on them?
Yes.
I think there should be a motion to accept that.
I don't think that, because the RFP was a selectman's RFP, and the group was a selectman's group, the selectmen have to, just from a process point of view, say, "Okay, we accept these findings and would like to implement them in the town." Now, voluntarily, if you see something's a good idea, you go for it. Okay, that's fine. But I don't want people to march to the drum of assuming this is what should happen without that happening.
Well, I don't, I personally don't want to accept, I have no problem accepting the report, okay? But stating that we're going to implement all the recommendations until we discuss them, I don't, or hear back.
Well, let me interrupt. I'm sorry to interrupt, Josh, just to follow up on that point though, Barry. Don't you want to get a recommendation from the department heads on the, on the, on the recommendations first and say, "Hey, they recommend that we hire 16 new people." Well, we disagree with that because A, B, C, D, and E. Doesn't that help the selectmen?
I guess I'd, yeah, I guess I would like to get a response would be the right statement, yes. And that would help me in being able to accept that we want to move forward with certain recommendations or not. Maybe that's how I should better articulate it.
That's good.
And if that is the, and if that's the intent of what you meant?
That is what I mean.
I'm okay with that. What I heard, and I apologize for miscommunication, was that we, the department heads have already, have already accepted this as gospel and are going to move forward on these things. So that was my miscommunication.
The example that I gave is the land use director went through it and said, "Yeah, I like this. We can do it," and so on and so forth. Remember, the prophecy.
I would approve, I would appreciate then, yes, that feedback. Then we can make a, an adoption or not adoption, piece by piece, if that would be the case.
So why don't you ask the department heads then, along Barry's lines, to respond by January 20th, say, to the recommendations made specific to their department. And then you can put it on our agenda thereafter, and then we could formally accept it there, along the lines that you talked about. I don't know what day of the week, January 20th is.
Saturday.
January 19th, okay? And then we can put it on an agenda for either the following week or the week thereafter.
See how the budget goes.
Okay, I get it. I know that's coming up, but I don't want to let this thing get dust right now. I want it to get traction, okay? Dust can be slippery. So the other...
Ice is slippery.
No, dust can be slippery.
Our agenda is getting slippery.
If you have a wood floor and you have dust and you have socks, watch out. All right. At any rate, the other question I have is for our board and for the audit review committee. What do you think? Do we keep them or do we disband them?
I think it'd be great to, well, the only, the value I see here is continuation to monitor our progress. I think we have as one of our goals and objectives to actually implement these recommendations. So if we adopt this goal, we will do a quarterly job of monitoring ourselves. If we think it's important to have this committee be a third party there, I think that's great, but I think there might be a little more work than the committee can lend value to in keeping them around for that.
That's what I'm saying. I mean, this, they, they were in ad hoc committee of ours, so to speak, formal committee, but they were advisory to us, and now we've got their advice. If they want to stick around and you all want to stay a committee, sure. Have at it, as you like to say, Jack.
Yeah.
But I just think we have plenty of committees.
Yeah. I was going to say, potentially too, I think there's an opportunity as the strategy starts to unfold for some of those folks from that committee who still want to partake to step forward and.
The Strategic Plan Committee. You guys are, you changed the name of the committee to the Strategic Plan Committee, Mark?
Do whatever the board wants to do.
I'm sorry. My suggestion would be to thank every one of you for all your hard work and to, someone make a motion to disband the committee.
I move we disband the operational audit committee.
And may I amend that?
With gratitude for their work.
The amendment has already been made, apparently, so we're good.
Someone want to second that?
I will second the main plus amendment.
For discussion purposes, I see you wanted to say something.
So my remarks up to this point, I tried to speak on behalf of the committee, if I could just say personally, and Jack already said it, Bud already said it, but I'd like to say it as well. Personally, after having worked with this committee for many months, I think this report is a testament to the very good hard work, dedication, and most importantly, great results of Mark and the team of employees who work for this town.
Hats off?
You're welcome.
Well, motions were made and seconded. Further discussion? All those in favor of the motion? Aye.
Aye.
That is unanimous. Thank you again.
Thanks, Kevin. Nice, nice presentation. Mr. Chairman, we, 8:15 is the next agenda item, and I don't know if anybody else is going to be coming in for that, so if I could just whip through the rest of my, well, at least.
Whip through what you can.
What I can.
Take your time with what you can.
Yep. At last week's meeting, selectmen P's requested that I provide the board with an update as to the negotiations with the friends of Prescott, Talisa Prescott School. Currently, the negotiations are on hold. An issue that has arisen relative to recent Prescott has impacted the negotiations. I sent you out a letter this afternoon from Attorney Collins. I have copies of it here for you tonight. But basically, there's, there was, there's a result that the change of use of the building could trigger some things that we need to work out. Attorney Collins is going to sit down with our building commissioner tomorrow. They're going to go through the items raised in this, in this letter, and hopefully they'll determine what parameters are permissible for uses in that structure. Once that's done, we'll get back together, Jack and I and Bud. We'll get back together with the, with the friends of Prescott and move those lease negotiations forward. But that's, that's the status of it right now. Programming is still ongoing at the building on what's allowed. I know the friends are out there drumming up business. They're doing, they're, they're working on their business plan. So I'd say, you know, this is a little hiccup, but I think we'll, we're working on it. I don't, Jack, if there's anything you want to add to that?
No, I mean, hats off to them. 125 people went through their first round of program. 125 people in a brand-new program. That's amazing.
Taught by Jack and Josh in some cases.
In some cases, but people came anyway. So.
I was going to say that, but my anger review was up.
That's what I'm here for, just to be very glad. So, so I would hope that we can just sort of let this, let this move on. As Attorney Collins, working on behalf of friends, is working with our building commissioner. We know that this is in progress. We're trying to iron things out. I think anything, any discussion we have tonight is going to be speculative on what the restrictions are, and will just add more confusion to a situation that's already been confusing. And I would hope we can have, let the public know that that's where we are and move on to the next item.
That's exactly my intention. I've given you your goals and objectives for, for the year. I believe if you go to page?
31.
31 in your, in your packets. If I can get that up here. I tried to do, take all the comments that were issued by members of the board and institute them into the final document. I, I think there are too many here. I think the board may want to cut it down a little bit, but that's, that's up for the board to decide. I don't know if you want to, I know we have the 8:15 agenda, so I don't want to go through them now, but I want the board to think about the potential of, of limiting some of these as we move, as we move forward.
I think that we've gone through these multiple times, and I've read the changes, and I think the changes are good. If you want to spend a bunch of time on this, I think that we should finish this this evening. I would like to see these approved, especially before the end of the year. And this is our last meeting, so if you want to do any of the other items on our agenda, move on with our next meeting with the Lost Lake Watership Advisory Committee, and then pick this back up afterwards. I really think that that way we don't cut it short with five minutes.
I agree 100%.
You know?
I agree. That's what I'm saying. I want you to think about it and come back to it after the Lost Lake Watership Committee presentation.
So do you have anything else in your town managers' report?
The one thing I do want to point out, and I said that earlier, January 8th is going to be the joint meeting with the finance committee. Bud, I'm not sure if the fincom has, the fincom aware of that date?
Nothing. We're aware of.
Okay, so we're meeting tomorrow night. So we'll let the fincom know tomorrow night. And I want to let the selectmen know, I did not post a selectman's meeting tomorrow, but the finance committee is meeting with me for me to update them on where I am as I put the final touches on the budget. And to also, we're going to go into executive session, so I can update the finance committee as to where we are on collective bargaining. So if you're around, you can attend the meeting, I would, I would encourage you to, to attend. You just can't deliberate.
That's tomorrow.
Tomorrow night, beginning at 7:00.
Here?
In this room. In this room.
So you're going to update the finance committee before you update the selectmen on?
Only because of the timing and the impact on the budget and meeting their 3.0%, the 3% guidance. I need to talk to the finance committee about that. So that's why. So it's, I'm not, I'm not circumventing the selectmen. I will schedule an executive session to update you as well on where we are with collective bargaining, but I have a December 31st deadline with the finance committee.
Understood. I get you.
Bless you.
And then if we don't like your budget when it comes forward, we'll talk to you later.
Throw it right up.
So if we come tomorrow night?
We cannot attend executive session.
We cannot attend the executive?
Yes, you can. The select, you can, why couldn't you?
If they let us.
If the finance committee invites you in, you absolutely can.
We can't deliberate.
You just can't deliberate. You can listen.
We can sit there and listen, fine.
I, I, I. I apologize, that's my bad.
I'm staying away. We've had enough open meeting violations. One person opens their mouth, not posted. My suggestion that if you guys want to come.
Gags?
Do so at your own peril. I know I can't keep my mouth shut, so I'm not going to come. So, at any rate.
You didn't have to.
Yes, I did say.
I didn't have to, it's a good.
I just turned my tone.
I just, I'm just, you're tremendous. Mr. Chairman, it's 7:15, and the.
It's 8:15.
8:15, rather. The Watershed, Lost Lake Watershed Advisory Committee is here. Our press, we have a little, they have a little PowerPoint presentation for the board.
Is that in the, is that in the?
It's not in the packet, it's in your Google Drive, correct.
And which one?
It's the L, it's the third one, the LLW data. Is it the manager? Which one do you want us to be looking at?
There's four of them, so.
All of them.
Reports, management, quality assurance.
I read it.
Good for you.
I think I know where we're coming.
Thank you.
I'm running on firewoods, I appreciate the paper. You got the right guy.
Thank you for coming tonight.
This review should only take a couple hours.
I want to introduce.
It's open to me.
Carl Nielsen, who is Vice President of ESS, who did most of the work, and I think Melissa actually did most of the work, and Carl took credit for it.
That's what happens here, I do, I do most of the work and I take credit.
Good evening. Thank you for coming tonight.
Glad to, thank you.
I'm Chairman of the Lost Lake Watershed Advisory Committee. This is the charter that we've been working toward. I went through this back in January of 2017 on a previous report that was based on what we covered up to that time. Just a little background here. This is the amount of information that we've created in the last year and a half relative to this whole effort. And I'll cover the various steps here. What I plan to do is kind of give an overload, an overview, and then Carl and Melissa will kind of cover more of the details relative to what's being recommended. Next slide. That's the watershed. You can see the lake, Lost Lake, lost pond there. The watershed is 14 times the size of the, of the lake itself.
Can you define a watershed?
It's that area surrounding us where we could get any types of nutrients coming in because of the tributaries that come into the lake, or just drainage from that area into the lake.
So water outside of the highlighted area flows, does not flow into Lost Lake? Water in the highlighted area does go to Lost Lake?
Yeah, that whole major dark colored area can flow into the lake in one form or another. But that gives you a sense of where some of the nutrients that come into the lake, that go into the lake, get into the lake, come from. Very, very large area. Next slide. There were, the ESS methodology, there were four-step process. We, sampling and analysis plan, that was in May of 2016, the Quality Assurance, Quality Assurance Project Plan, called the QAPP in June of 2016, and that kind of gets through how everything's going to be done and to be done right. The Water Quality Data Report, which I presented last January, and then tonight, we're going to be talking about the, given all that information, the Watershed Management Plan. Next slide. Given the fact that it's become pretty obvious.
Is that you?
Given the fact that it's pretty obvious from the report and all the data, that the prime problem is actually the watershed, the nutrients coming in from the watershed. And tested a lot of different areas, and a lot of areas, a lot of things that were tested. And it's pretty obvious that the sewer system, the septic systems are not the big problem here. It's actually the, what's coming in from the watershed. And I think that's what we have to focus on in the future, and that's what the whole report tries to get to, if you will. This is the kind of thing that can happen outside or inside the watershed that eventually gets into the lake, whether it be fertilizer, or people washing their cars on top of a lake. So with that, I will turn it over to Carl, and I think some of that data might be in the, in the report, probably mostly, so. Have you shared the report with anyone here?
We have.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so we have a, a sampling and analysis plan, water quality study of Lost Lake Watershed. We have a Quality Assurance Project Plan, a Lost Lake Watershed Management Plan, and a water quality study, Lost Lake Watershed Data Report.
Okay, excellent.
And Allison's read every page of them.
5:00 AM until 8:00 AM on Saturday morning.
Good for you. That's about when I wrote it, too. So, just for introductions, my name's Carl Nielsen. I was here back when you selected our company to do the work. I'm a certified lake manager. This is the kind of work I do for a lot of towns and state agencies in Massachusetts, and the problems you're having here aren't much different than the problems a lot of towns are seeing with lakes that have developed over time, and septic systems have aged, and waterships, once they're developed, they start generating phosphorus. And phosphorus is the nutrient of concern for most freshwater systems. So if you can control the sources of phosphorus to your pond, the water quality within the pond will be better. But over time, once that phosphorus gets into the pond, it starts to recirculate through the pond. And so you've got two problems. You've got the, the phosphorus of Christmas past, and the, you know, current phosphorus that's coming in now, and you've got to address both really to restore the lake.
And the lake is screwed?
Yeah, at this point. So what I've circulated is some of the key tables that came out of that report. You know, the SAP was really just a, a study plan that showed how we're going to go about our work to make sure that we were on track with what the town expected. The QAPP is a report that really we shared with EPA to review, so that they could say, yep, the data you're collecting will be suitable for us going forward, should you apply for grants or funding that EPA might be making decisions on.
If they're still around.
Yeah, well, we won't get that tonight, beyond the scope of the study. What we really focused on is the phosphorus, and we assessed, as Art had mentioned, surface water coming in from the Martins Pond Brook. We looked at the various runoff from shoreline, rivulets and erosional areas. We looked at surface water in the lake, at the bottom of the lake, at the outlet of the pond, as well as took samples of the sediment itself, and sort of put that all into a series of models that look at phosphorus and how it's being consumed with the pond, how much it can handle, and then, you know, sort of a mass balance sheet on where that pond stands. The first table here shows essentially the phosphorus modeling results, and the key here is the lake can handle about 248 kilograms of phosphorus a year. That's not a very useful number unless you know how much it's being delivered to the lake, and it's getting about 755 kilograms a year, so more than it can handle by three factor. So that's what your challenge is.
So we need to.
Yeah.
Let's hit it by 500.
Kilograms a year.
Yeah.
If we want, they'll get to us. Well, here's, here's the thing. So you've got, if this is 200, 400, 600, 700, right? This is your water clarity, right? This is bad. This is good. Good water clarity. So if you've got a chart that looks like that, the lake, anything down here, your water quality, your nutrients, water quality stays good. As you start to add nutrient, the water quality gets bad. Right around 500 or so, your water quality stops getting bad, it just stays bad. And then once you get up to 700, where you guys are, you can cut your load by 200, which is a nice cut, but you see no improvement in water clarity. And so that's the challenge. It's really not doing a little bit of things, but doing enough to make a difference. And that's, that's what the report really focused on, is how do you prioritize your actions so that you're not just making a small dent in the problem, you're actually making a meaningful dent. So, the next chart, Table J, just shows where it's coming from, and 63% of it's coming from residential areas, so, which isn't a surprise, really. But what that tells you is you've, you've really got to focus on those areas, and we're not talking about septic systems in this case. Phosphorus doesn't readily travel through soils, it absorbs to it. So you could, unless you have a failing septic system that's right on the shore of the lake and breaking out, you won't get a lot of phosphorus from the septic system. What we're talking about is stormwater runoff. So rooftops, driveways, any packed soils, lawns are considered packed soils. So the fertilizer you put on a lawn, or even, even in rainfall, the precipitation itself has more phosphorus than your lake can handle. So the water that hits the pond is actually more than it can handle.
Of the rain?
Yep. Yeah, it's unfortunate. So what happens is, is if it lands on the forest, the rain lands on the forest and percolates through the soil, all that phosphorus is removed. It's a wonderful thing. When it hits a road, or a rooftop, or a packed lawn, it hits that, and unless it's abated, it really just goes into the pond and contributes to algal blooms, which over time settle on the bottom and recirculate that nutrient year after year. It fuels the rooted plant growth over time. So really, what you want to do is try to minimize your phosphorus transport to the pond. And then, you know, we could, I could take you through more science if you want to, but that's ultimately the, the bottom line, is you've got too much phosphorus, more than the lake can handle. The next steps really are how to manage that, and we basically pitched a two-pronged, perhaps a three-pronged approach for the phosphorus management, which is education, which you saw our brochure there. I can tell you, you're not going to get anywhere near, you know, below the 500 level by doing education alone. It, it might make a 1% dent, if you're really diligent about sending out the message. It's just not meaningful enough. And that's just because the amount of people that adopted are pretty low percentage of the watershed residents, and then the way they adopt it and how well they adopt it. I got a story from my unfortunately father-in-law, who was learning about watershed management, and he's like, oh, yeah, I pick up the dog waste. I'm like, what do you do with it? Well, I throw it in that drain. I'm like, oh. You know, that's not helpful. So, you know, some of the education, it's, it's a multi-phased approach for, for the education. So what we really want to do is try to work on stormwater solutions, and the next step that we've recommended is going out into the watershed and trying to find specific sites. And there were a number of sites on the immediate shoreline of the pond that are quick and easy fixes, and those have already been identified. I think the committee had already targeted a number of sites. And those are easy fixes. The challenge is, and there's grants available for those types of projects, the DPW or Highway Department needs to be able to maintain those structures regularly, which is a town question and a town issue. Some structures you can design to be very low maintenance, but the things that we've found are, tend to be more effective are when you do site-by-site analysis. So a particular home or residential area, like a street, where you say, these four houses, that all the drainage goes in this direction, and if we could create a rain, what they call a rain garden essentially in this area, to direct the flow and infiltrate it, rather than letting it continue down the road and build up and add to the erosion, that tends to be a good way to solve the problem. And there's funding for those and grants for addressing those types of problems. And the, the challenge with that is, if you think about it, site-by-site and project-by-project and grant-by-grant, it'll be many years before you get enough reduction to start to see meaningful results. And that either can be frustrating to some people, or if you're not patient, that's disappointing to some people. We tend to want to also do the in-lake management and address the phosphorus that's accumulated over time. And there's a way to do that, which is called nutrient inactivation, or alum treatment. And essentially, it's a, it's a compound that binds with the phosphorus and locks it up in the sediment. Alum, yes, familiar with it. So that approach, there's different ways to do that, but essentially, you look at the sediment and the chemistry of the sediment, and you design an approach that matches the lake itself. There's a way you can do low-dose alum, which is very, like, two parts per million basically every year, and it slowly, it strips the phosphorus out of the water column and settles it to the bottom every year. That's a long-term commitment, and if you start down that road and then give it up after two years, you really just got those two years of benefit. You don't get any benefit going forward, really. The other approach is a full-dose alum application, where you put it in sufficient to bind up all the alum or the phosphorus that's in the sediment. At the current time, it locks it up. For this lake, we calculated eight to 12 years of benefit for that, which is good. It might be more than that, you might get 15, you might get 20 out of it, but I don't want to promise that. But if you get eight to 12 years of benefit, and you're working on the watershed issues concurrently, you can actually, by the time that sort of wears out, your water incoming is clean, or cleaner, and the benefit will extend or last longer as you continue to make progress on the watershed issues. So that's really the, the benefit of the nutrient. The, the approach we've proposed is there's that two-pronged approach, and if you throw in the education, that's the third prompt. We did talk about the sewer system. I think, you know, in our research, it's been quite extensively studied, you know, and understanding the costs. We calculated the amount of nutrient or phosphorus coming in from groundwater to be about 1%. And that's really based on hydrology more than anything else. So if, if only 1% of your water is coming in as groundwater, and the rest is surface water, direct rainfall, runoff, even if it's really dirty and you eliminate it, you've, you've only eliminated 1% of the load. So that's really the, the challenge with the, not that the sewer system wouldn't be beneficial, it's just not going to move it from 700 to below 500. It might, don't make a dent in it, but like I said, 1%, so seven kilograms a year. Algicides are another approach. If you don't want to address the root cause of the nutrient, you just keep killing the algae every year, and if you have a bloom, you put in the algicide. If you don't have a bloom, you don't have to do anything. That's an approach that works because it's cheap and keeps the water clear. It doesn't address the underlying problem, obviously. It's about a third of the cost of a low-dose alum treatment, which would strip the nutrients and give you that long-term benefit every year. So if you look at it that way, you say, well, I'd rather, you know, when you're talking, what do you, do you, have you done an algicide treatment?
Oh, yeah.
Copper?
No, actually, we did a little bit a few years ago. Most of the, most of it's been with Somar.
Okay. Or herbicide.
Herbicides.
So, and we did talk about how to manage the aquatic plants. I don't, I won't get into that. There's a number of approaches for that. And we really focused on how to improve the water quality going forward. So that's, that's it in a nutshell. I can, I'd be glad to answer questions, and if you want to move on, that's fine, too.
No, I think we should go through some questions. Allison?
So I really appreciate all this information. As a civil engineer who grew up on a lake in upstate New York, and intimately familiar with, with all of this.
Issues, yeah.
Up there, it ultimately got to a point, there was education, and then there were laws passed around fertilizers and runoff and rain gardens, and can you just speak to the efficacy of that, and the, whether that's at all realistic in this?
Yeah, the fertilizer bans have been in, are just recently put in place for Massachusetts. So as far as phosphorus in fertilizer.
Right.
They're not selling it in. They're not selling it any longer. You can buy it elsewhere and bring it in, but for the most part, if you go to the hardware store, the places, Home Depot...
Does New Hampshire still allow it?
I'm not sure if they do or not. I know that Massachusetts has, and dish detergents and laundry detergents have had a phosphorus ban for years. So, really, that piece of the education and the leg, you know, regulating it, has been sort of addressed in Massachusetts. The other thing that's happening is, generally speaking, a lot of towns, if, I haven't looked at your stormwater regs, but if you, some towns have very specific stormwater regulations in place. So as the Conservation Commission is going through a permit, or reviewing a project, the Planning Board or the CONCON will ensure that the standards are being met for, there's a Massachusetts stormwater manual. So, more than likely, you've adopted that. And that ensures that any development going forward is done to the best standards. But those standards aren't always focused on removal of phosphorus. They're often focused on removal of sediment, which is nice. And for the most part, sediment and phosphorus associate pretty well together. So if you remove the sediment, you're removing a lot of the phosphorus. But, so those new developments will happen, but like I say, you've got a problem already from the existing development. So if you can find a way to encourage or promote the collection of rainwater and the infiltration of rainwater on a site-by-site basis, that's the best way to do it. And Littleton, if you're familiar with Littleton, they did a project like that for Long Lake, and was somewhat successful. They got quite a bit of funding for it, to do it and implement it.
From?
319 grants, the Massachusetts Nonpoint Source 319 grant. It's EPA money that the state allocates to different towns.
Anything else?
Oh, I have a whole blankie list.
Well?
How much?
More phosphorus.
So you had said that a lot of the phosphorus is present just in the rainwater.
Yep.
Even just looking at kind of how much rainwater falls directly on the lake, I mean, is it, is it technically feasible to get to a point where, where the lake can be...
Yeah, the volume of water that falls directly on the lake, in relation to the amount the lake receives, is pretty low.
Okay.
Because it's, if you think about it, it's raining on 14 times the area of lake, and that's, 2/3 of that makes it to the lake. So, in that regard, you know, and the difference between, so for instance, most lakes in general in Massachusetts can handle about .015 milligrams per liter of phosphorus. That's sort of their, that cutoff, the 200 number. Rainwater's at .02. So it's just a little more than what it, most lakes can handle. And that, that phosphorus in the atmosphere is really just atmospheric deposition. It comes during dry weather or wet weather, and it's from ag fields out in the Midwest. It's from, you know, when they stir up dust. It's from power plant emissions. It's from a range of things, but it, it basically is in the atmosphere, and then when it rains, it strips it out.
Do we currently, do you guys know, do we have catch bases for things at the town level that drain directly? I assume that those have already been dealt with.
There's not a lot there. Most of it is what they would call country drainage, which is essentially curbs, without a curb, essentially just water running off the road and down the side and into a gully.
And how much of this situation i- is impacted by kind of the, just the, the nature of the lake itself, i.e., it was kind of a man-made lake? How much is, are we sort of battling nature to...
Well, all lakes age. Yeah, all lakes do age. And all lakes, well, I won't say all, many lakes in Massachusetts were man-made. They were either impounded for whatever reasons, dams were put in for mills, they were put in for power, they were put in for recreation, flood control, a number of things. But just because it's natural doesn't mean it, it can't be improved or protected or preserved. So, if the town were to be struck by lightning and start to burn, that's a natural thing. You'd still stop it. So, I would say that for a lake like this, you would, you know, there's a lot of people that have a vested interest in having it protected and preserved, even though it's natural.
But I thought parts of it were, were not natural. It was man-made.
Well, it's, it's being accelerated by the development in the watershed. So all lakes will eventually turn to a wetland, but over time, like geologic time, but if you have development in the watershed, that accelerates the process. And so what we're asking, or recommending, is that you try to retard the process of aging the lake by putting in stormwater controls.
Understood. How much of this becomes kind of a situation where, you know, we're going to try and reroute the Mississippi River?
Oh, no.
It's just never...
It's not that difficult.
We're not going to beat Mother Nature. So this isn't that, that kind of situation whereby it's a man-made water body that...
No. No, it can be, it can be managed. All, I mean, there's, you know, the, right now, the actions that are required are relatively, they're pretty common. Stormwater controls are something that many municipalities have for managing stormwater runoff to protect the water resources in their town. Alum treatments are what you do to alleviate the ills of the years gone by. The next step, if you let it go for another 20, 30 years, would be to start thinking about dredging. And the costs for dredging are significantly more. So this would slow your progress towards dredging by starting to do, think about it proactively and manage the stormwater now, and try to improve the condition before it. It will get worse. It's just a matter of whether you let it or not.
Good?
Yep.
I did have a couple of comments. Alex Whittle and Brooke Gager, back in 2014, put together this stuff, which is erosion and stormwater runoff at Lost Lake Knobs Pond. And it's, if you go through it, and you use picture after picture after picture of where we're seeing erosion, sediment washing into the lake. Now, Alex has worked with some Boy Scouts to fix up Baby Beach at one end of the lake. The Conservation Commission has done work at Sagerson Beach to put in breaker bars to reduce the amount of water that runs down the path. Josh has actually helped out by moving some of the sediment that's gone into the lake back onto the shore. All came from the trail. There are steps that people could take. There's another booklet that I don't have a hard copy of, with Ed Himlen, that Alex had worked with, and that covers similar information, shows lots of erosion, and has a lot of information in there, how can you begin to resolve it over time. It's not going to happen overnight, but if we don't start, it'll never happen. I think Tom Delaney in the Highway Department can probably help us a lot where he sees erosion. Some people have taken on their, their own initiative to put in riprap. I did it on a house that I restored next to me that I bought and now renting. There's some places around the lake where they put in a lot of riprap because there was so much water going across their property and into the lake. It was totally eroding their lawns in that area. I think Brad Harper is here as president of Groton Lakes Association. I think we can use, work with Brad and the GLA to socialize this among the, at least the shoreline residents, to get them a little bit more up to speed on it. The challenge is going to be, how do we get the rest of, the rest of the town involved in this? That color brochure is good. Hopefully, we can figure out how to way to distribute it to the residents. Maybe, I think Jack mentioned at our meeting the other night, maybe we put it in with the town warrant. If you say tax bill, a lot of people get their tax bill electronically. If you say electric bill, a lot of people get their electric bill electronically. So you can't really do a mailing in that. So we've got to come, get creative and figure out how we can distribute that. Because what that color brochure does is it takes the things that Colonel was talking about, and tries to put them into a, into something that people can relate to and understand. Will they do anything? I, I know Alex and I have been frustrated over the years. No. Gee, it's a color brochure, it's kind of nice. Will they take it on their own, unless their property's getting washed away? I'm not sure. If you look at that watershed map, look at the amount of, of area that, well, for example, I think the Groton School and Lawrence Academy have. What have they been putting on their lawns for decades and decades and decades? How has that affected the, the soil conditions? As we were doing this work about a year, a year or so ago, John Smigelski came to me, and he said, he's, he's a farmer in town a few towns, and he said, "Art, I test my soil every year before I plant it. I've got areas where there is absolutely no record of any type of fertilizer being used on this land. And look at the level of phosphates in the dirt, in the, in the stuff that was growing." And then I was talking to Earl Carter, and he reminded me that around eight, mid-1800s, the railroads came in, and Boston was shipping all their manure out to Groton, because it was agricultural land. And that manure was spread all over Groton, all over Groton. Is there a possibility that phosphate from that manure, because it went on for years and years and years, is still in the soil? Now, if that's the case, we've got a big problem.
Well, there's, there's all kinds of problems. There's the awareness issue, which is far beyond that of the shoreline residents of Lost Lake, which represent only about a 13th of the overall watershed. And that as long as people want green lawns, and as long as people have their gutters running off, and as long as we live in a drumlin area which feeds the streams, this is just going to become an ongoing issue. And, you know, that, I think that gets me to, and we're heading down the board that way, but I'm going to ask you like three questions.
Sure.
The first question would be, is what effect of the sonar treatment you put in the lake four years ago, was it, I believe? Was it four years ago?
Yes.
When we had, when we had a huge kabamba issue and milfoil issue? When we wiped all that out, could there have been eutrophication, which caused phosphate loading into the lake, which is showing artificially high levels, as opposed to, which you may be attributing to runoff, which could have occurred from that?
Well, every year, sonar, the way it works is it basically affects the chloroplast of the plant, causes them to very slowly die because they can't make food for themselves. So the, the, the plant itself decays, drops out of the water column, and releases whatever nutrient was in that biomass of the plant. That happens almost every fall naturally, as the plants decay in the fall. So what sonar does is it stops that process before the plant can expand and grow during the summer season, causes it to collapse, so you have a clear lake to swim in. So there's no added phosphorus by doing the sonar treatment. It really just moves the timing of the decay from the fall to spring, so that, so there's no added phosphorus.
I get that. I'm talking about when we originally did the application.
Yep.
We had issues where we had milfoil and kabamba everywhere. And the sonar was so effective because it cleared up a tremendous amount of that all at once over a period of, what, four months, six months?
Yeah.
Something along those lines. So what I'm saying is, could that massive die-off have contributed to the phosphorus level of the lake?
No.
Thank you.
We get that annually anyway.
Yeah.
The other thing, Josh...
A short answer, no.
If you go back and look at previous studies, whether it be Bay State study, or a whole bunch of other studies over time, the level of phosphates has been pretty consistent. Lower in Knobs Pond, higher in, in Lost Lake. It's, it's the, what, you, you had 50 to 25 to 100 parts per billion? You, you use milligrams per liter, but, whereas in Knobs Pond, it's more like 15 to 25, I think, if I remember correctly.
So I guess...
And that's, so we didn't see a major change in phosphate levels in the lake as a result of sonar treatment.
Next question is, heading north towards Martin's Pond and the swarm of drumlins in that area right there. As Art pointed out, there was a lot of manure brought out to Groton, and then there's a lot of manure being generated in Groton. And then there's sports fields.
I'll leave, thank you.
And then there's sports fields, and all sorts of things going on. So I think that you can put an awareness program out there all you want, but I think that there's a huge issue that maybe over the course of the next 10 years can be undertaken with grants by the DPW in terms of, you know, creating a better drainage system and biofiltration and rain gardens and things like that. But for the interim, I'm interested in alum, okay? And what I want to know is, what effect does alum have on drinking water? What kind of studies have been done? Because ultimately, that water is potentially going to, not potentially, it is going to go to where our drinking water comes in town.
Sure. Alum is used by a lot of water treatment companies to manage the quality and clarity of the water, to settle out particulates that are in the water supply before filtering to make it more efficient to use. We're doing a treatment next spring for the Providence Water Supply System, where we're treating a 250-acre reservoir with alum, and it's one of their water supply reservoirs. So, there's really no issue with using it. It, it basically binds with phosphorus, that's what it does, and...
Sticks to the soil.
Sticks to the soil and, and particles in the water.
It's not an herbicide, aluminum...
It's not an herbicide.
Well, I understand.
Yeah.
No, I know what it is.
Okay.
So, and, and you gave us a cost potential estimate for that?
I did.
Yeah.
Well, it's, it's a range.
I see that.
You know, the, the first step is really coming up with a design and the permitting for it, which we estimate to be about a $25,000 tag item. If you do the low-dose alum, you're looking at a $30,000 a year type of number. If you do the full dose, it's a $300,000 effort, and then that's it for eight to 12 years.
And that's a lot cheaper than a $13 million source is.
I believe it is, yes.
Yeah.
I'll calculate those as there, too.
Yeah. All right.
I'm curious, can you get grants for alum treatment?
You, depends, in Massachusetts, it's very difficult to get grants for alum treatment. However, they do give them, and it really has to be that you're either showing significant progress, or have made progress towards addressing the stormwater coming in, because they don't want to see you using that as the solution, when the solution is fix the problem, and, and then after you've shown you can do that, they'll start to maybe allow you to do some alum treatment.
So it has to be a parallel with...
At least, at least parallel.
Lost Lake in the area of the watershed, I would say, topographically challenged in a lot of ways, as opposed to other areas. And I, I don't mean that in a bad way, but I'm just saying, just due to the, the drumlins and the streams and, and the whole watershed.
Yeah, there's a grant program called the 604B Grant, and we tried to go after one of those previously before doing the study, which was a little hard to pitch. But essentially, they're due February 9th this year, this coming year. But if you can make the case that the, you know, do a 604B study, and the 604B study recommends sort of a dual-pronged approach with alum and stormwater, which is what we've done, but the next step is really saying, well, where in the watershed do these solutions need to be? Show us some sites. Show us how much those sites are going to cost to fix, and then 319 can come and fund that, that, those projects. 604B would pay for that study that we recommended here, if you can get a 604B grant. And then you'd have sites in the watershed identified, and you could do, you could even pay for the alum assessment through the 604B. There's no match required for a 604B, so if you win it, you get the money basically to do the work. Then that sets you up very well for the 319 program.
So you're aware of this, Art?
Yeah, it's actually mentioned in the...
We got it in the report, too.
Yeah, I'm just making sure that, because this sounds promising. All right, enough time taken. Sorry, Derek?
So I, I have just a question. It's a huge area that is the watershed, and there's a lot of, a lot of potential residences or existing residents or existing farms that could become future residences. We have a peer board, the Planning Board, which has some authority over situations like that. Is it reasonable for us to pass a recommendation off to them to perhaps create some sort of anti-phosphorus watershed zone for, so that any project that gets done, or any variance that comes before them, has to have some type of rainwater mitigation ensconced within it in order to, to begin to protect the watershed? So, we may not be able to solve what's there existing, but anything in the future, if we have something in place to make sure that doesn't contribute extra runoff, because as, as houses get built, roofs and grass and, and lawns eventually usually get put in. Even if you say, "I don't want a lawn," they put a lawn in anyway, right? So, it seems like there might be opportunity from a zoning point of view to ask our peer board to perhaps consider something like this to, you know, prevent, to future-proof, if you will.
Yeah, there are, and there's, I, I haven't looked or reviewed the, the bylaws, stormwater bylaws in town, if there are any, but those things can be worked on or improved over time to incorporate the goals of phosphorus reduction. It's just... It's just a weather, you know, I don't know where you are currently and how much improvement could be made there, but definitely there is a way to do that and it's, you know, people would have to probably vote to change those or amend them.
And it looks like, you know, possible town, town meeting, getting up people to vote for them.
If I could just jump in then, I think that would be valuable as a regulation for the entire town. That's, Lost Lake isn't our only lake or pond. Batacuk has had problems also and I'm also very much aware of the work of the National River Watershed Association and they've been talking about non-point source pollution and for years. So, I mean, I think that if there is the possibility of some regulatory requirements for new construction, we ought to look into that. I am pretty sure that we are, we have some pretty good, I know we have pretty good stormwater and rainwater management guidelines somewhere in the planning process already, because we have people in town who are very attuned to that.
Sure, yep. Good.
Just about any permit, just so you know, from the planning board, has to go through the Erosion Control and Stormwater Management Committee.
Right, good.
And it's, I think we're ahead of the curve in town from what a lot of other communities are doing.
Yeah, and you're not allowed to even drive trucks in, you know, for construction onto the road that are going to bring, track your topsoil off. You know, you've got to put gravel down if you're doing construction in your own.
Yeah, the real challenge is just, like you said, the size of the watershed is starting to be beyond what can reasonably be expected to be managed through, you know, site-by-site control. It's not totally unreasonable in that, you know, the watershed is within the town, which helps. It's, we've worked on towns where the watershed is 100 times the size of the pond and they just go, oh my gosh, we can't work with those four towns to get this accomplished for our pond. So for instance, we did a project in Wellesley. Their pond was having the same issue. It's actually on a water supply where they have town wells, public beach, et cetera. And the solution was to put in what's called an alum dosing station. So essentially, the brook that comes in is fitted with a tank and some pumps. And the pumps are flow-actuated so that as the water level rises, you go, oh, the storm flow is coming in, it kicks on the dose and as the flow goes up, the dose goes higher. And every bit of water that's coming down that brook is treated appropriately to match the phosphorus load that's coming in and it binds up and settles out, which is great. And given that you have one brook that's delivering the majority of your phosphorus, that's one possible solution. But there's, you know, you need a place to put that device, you know, where it's, you know, town land ideally, close to the river. You know, there's other things that haven't really been looked at as part of this study, but it could be looked at. There's an annual cost to filling that tank with the alum, you know, it's not free once you set it up, so there's a capital equipment cost. Someone has to run it, someone has to operate it.
So one thing I just want to say is, if we were to in any way take the approach that, oh my God, this is such an overwhelming problem, we're never going to solve it, I just want to remind us all that we have Marion Stoddard still with us and if ever anyone faced a daunting problem of, a water quality problem and began it and completed it successfully in cleaning up the National River, I don't know if you know this story, but we need to honor Marion's model and say, we can do this. And we, it sounds like your study is amazing. I just want to compliment how thorough this was, the methodology is all there, all the data's there, if anybody questions anything, I am incredibly impressed. I didn't read every page, but.
You didn't read all 500 pages?
I tried, but I did doze off on a few.
Yeah.
So I want to compliment the study. I want to say that, yes, I think we should explore whatever treatment, mitigation and prevention mechanisms are available to us. Is this committee going to continue, are your committees continuing on this?
As you recall.
And the rest of your members, are they interested in continuing?
Some are. I want to get a life.
Okay, well, I mean, I think it sounds like we should make sure that there is, that this report doesn't, isn't the end of the process.
Shouldn't be, shouldn't be.
Also, since this must have been approved before my tenure on this board, can I ask how much we paid for this report?
This study here, between grant money that we received, about what, 40-something thousand, I think?
No, 33,000.
33,000, I'm sorry.
Now, this was actually a spinoff of the original sewer advisory committee and we had a small budget and then there was money left over in the sewer advisory committee budget. And I had to go to a town meeting and make a presentation that we should merge the two from a budget point of view. So we're able to get enough money to pay for this study.
Well, you refer back to sewer advisory and I want, I just want to say, I think, thank goodness, we did not decide to take the sewer route and now we have a report that says it would have been literally a drop in the bucket.
We did a similar report for the town of Rentham about 10 years ago. They were wrestling with the searing issue and they hired us and we found very, they were at, they had three lakes we looked at and one of them was 10% of the load, was the sort of the high end of the number, but it really ended up being thumbs down on the searing and.
I understand that for a lot of people, the quick conclusion is, well, we have failing septic systems and bad septic systems and we should fix them. But having, and we did have, I think, some previous reports that didn't give us great information, so I am very happy with this report. I'm very happy with the corrected data and I urge us all to remember that, that, yeah, it's not like you get a free pass for a failing septic system, but that's a separate issue. You should fix it for different reasons, not because it's making the weeds grow in the lake.
Jack?
So indeed, I'll echo some of these thoughts and I'll try to be really quick because this is taking some time. Best value we've gotten on this lake study in a long time. We spent $600,000 for a sewer effort. We spent $100,000 to try to validate it. It was a messy, messy thing and we spent 30 grand with you guys and you came up with simple, easy to understand evaluation. Your presentation here was so clear.
Okay.
Was really easy to understand.
Thank you.
People can leave here and say, I get it. So value is there. I want to say that Mark Dugger, who was one of the members of our committee, is a professional in this regard. He doesn't do exactly what you do, but he knows water quality, worked for the federal government, knows his stuff, looked at your report, said, yeah, it would have been nice to have more sample sites, et cetera. It's always nice, it costs more money, right? But he said that by and large, this thing is directly dead, directionally dead on and gave it a lot of his kudos. We didn't talk about algae blooms. We do get algae blooms in the lake. There's a lot of worry that the algae blooms are poisonous algae. We, I think your study said, you know, it's not pleasant, but it's also not poisonous. We should put people's minds to rest with that. And then the, and really that's it. I don't want to keep going on and on, but I want to thank you very much. I've been on this committee for a long time and I finally feel good about where we are in terms of an answer, a study and, and an evaluation. So thank you.
Very precise, Jack.
Thank you.
Try it.
One more question.
Sure.
So one last question for you guys and it's kind of a biggie. What are your recommendations based on your experience to, to kind of help the whole community see this as a community issue rather than, you know, just a few property owners or a small section of town? How do we kind of educate folks?
Focus is really on the education and the messaging and how you present either the results of the study or the value of the study. You know, the, the resources used by people at the town beach, the, you know, it's used by others besides those that live on the lake. And as long as you spread that message that way, sometimes there can be signage at the place of public access, I don't know if you have a kiosk there or not, but something that allows people to pull out a brochure and understand the resource that they're about to use. If you put some fish pictures on it, usually it gets taken. People will want to see it. A lot of fishermen might come in and use the lake for a day type of thing. But you can also get support from bass anglers associations, trout unlimited and folks that will work to educate the members locally or their members locally that might be using the pond from outside. But it's, it's a, it's a hard thing to do because unless you even know it's there and were to use it, you're not going to care about it. But we do find that strong lake associations really help. If you have a strong lake association that has a good number of members, those members talk to other people in town, they can get them to come to vote for funding and things that need to be done. The town meetings tend to go better if you're trying to get funding approved and you have a strong lake association with members that show up as opposed to a lake association that's weak and five people, then things don't pass and it's very hard to advocate for spending $300,000 on alum if no one shows up to the town meeting and supports the project. So I think it's, you know, there's, there's a strong lake association, I think that helps here, so that's.
There was one other thing I forgot to mention. Our Stormwater Earth Removal Committee, that's appointed by the board, is that right?
Correct.
But, and they have good practices, but I don't think that they have a perspective on phosphorus, no? Correct, Mark? We don't really, it's not really part of the consideration. It's about erosion, right? Maybe we, various ideas, I think was great. Maybe we can ask that board to start to contemplate what policies we might put, research and talk about what policies we might put in place to accommodate phosphorus reduction.
There is, the New Hampshire Stormwater Center is an online resource. It's, I think it's associated with the University of New Hampshire, but that's, their whole focus is stormwater research for nutrient control primarily. And so that focus, they, they talk about the designs that work for removing phosphorus, how to remove it, which ones do 50% removal versus 20% removal and how much they, you know, which is more cost-effective than others and which is easier to maintain than others. And they have a lot of long-term data on systems that they've built and tested on site.
So there's some good resources.
Good resources.
My suggestion is, and I'd ask the board if they agree, that we ask the Stormwater Earth Removal Committee to start iterating on some ideas and come back to us with some suggestions.
It would be nice if, it would be nice if Art had the time, I'm not trying to volunteer you, but.
I want to retire one of these days.
If you don't want to do it, maybe Brad will do it or somebody else. But to take this high-level report as well as share this other 500 pages with, no, no, I'm serious, with them and see if they would consider adopting something along the lines of what Barry proposed and what you just said, Jack.
Is time she involved with that?
It's Michelle Collet, I believe, Ed Perkins?
Tom Delaney.
Tom Delaney.
Somebody from the Conservation Commission.
Michelle, get in touch.
Yeah, just get, Michelle's on top of this.
I would also. Work with them if you need somebody to come in as a consultant and give them advice and point them in the right direction and talk about where their regs are weak or stronger than they could be or.
No, no, I understand.
So there's, I apologize, the town, chapter 352 of the town code describes this Earth Removal Stormwater Committee. And just a quick browse, doesn't show anything related to.
Nutrient, phosphorus.
Nutrient. I'm sorry, I may have missed something going quickly. So it may be reasonable for us, since this appears to be a code regulatory issue, that this doesn't even fall to the planning board, this falls to the town meeting. And we could certainly try to amend chapter 352 to include phosphorus, but we should get input from the right.
I would love their committee, though, to bring it forward and we can point them in the right direction, certainly.
Or Conservation Commission, I would imagine.
Absolutely.
And I, I think there's two parts. I would strongly encourage you to at least get in touch with the Watershed Association because there may be some partnership, some working together that would be helpful. And I think a big public education push on phosphorus, because people do use fertilizers on their own lawn and there's probably better ways or better times to put it on than, than others. Also, there'd be a question of if it's still legal to be sold in New Hampshire. A lot of people do most of their shopping in New Hampshire. We need to really get people more aware.
Yeah, and there's, with regard to the code, there are towns that have phosphorus written into their code already. And I suspect if you do a quick search online, you can find a bylaw or some language that others have already developed that they could consider adopting.
And it's great to have it written into the code, but just because it's in the code, you know, the phosphorus police aren't out there. And I don't mean that as a, as a joke, but you know, in the industry, in, you know, 35 years I've been a hardscape, landscape contractor and I watch what a lot of the guys who start off in this business and they start off with a lawnmower and a fertilizer spreader. And they're going to get the cheapest fertilizer they possibly can from whatever source without reading what's in it and just put it down regardless of what regulations may exist in the community. Because the customer wants their green lawn.
Yeah.
So.
So what's our action item?
Action item is, I would ask them to move forward the Stormwater Management Advisory, I'm sorry, the Erosion Control and Stormwater Management Committee in terms of trying to put some type of language in there as well as, you know, maybe you can have a joint meeting with the Conservation Commission at the same time. And then the next step would probably be, as I think, I think Barry pointed it out, is maybe just in the zoning as it moves forward to try and require as part of the drainage systems, biofiltration via rain gardens and not just do a traditional detention-retention pond, but something that's actually going to suck up the phosphorus.
Well, those recommendations can come out of the Stormwater Erosion Committee.
I get it.
Will be tasked to research this thing.
So we'll disband you afterwards.
All right, I'll put you in touch with, all right, maybe you lead, Arthur, maybe you lead, Michelle can talk and.
Yeah, yeah.
And Tom Delaney.
I'm trying to.
Please. Apologize on behalf of me to Michelle because this, this is, this chapter 352 is insanely long and so I'm probably wrong, but there's something within this about nutrients, but just, I don't want to be, I don't want, you said it's not there, no, I just, there's not enough time to read.
Listen, we have many more things to do, but Alex wanted to speak, Brad wants to speak, and then we really are going to move on.
Just a point of information, I did make a presentation a couple years ago in the Stormwater, Earth Removal Stormwater Committee about the problems at the lake. I didn't address it specifically, I didn't address it specifically towards phosphorus, which is pointed out, we have done and they do have a pocket of this. So at least we made the foray into that committee, so they're aware of it.
Very good, thank you. Brad?
Thanks, Brad Harper, Brown Lakes Association, also Lost Lake resident. Awesome job, great report, public data and analysis you guys did, spot on. Two questions quickly. One, does any of the Lost Lake watershed go outside Groton border?
I don't believe it does.
Okay, good. Second question, Alex pointed out, thank you, that there's a comment in the report that says you do not recommend hydroraking because of the fragmentation of weeds. I was wondering if you could put that in a little bit more context because that is one of the tools in the toolbox that we would like to employ for certain techniques, not necessarily eradication of non-native invasive weeds, but for removal of the built-up muck in swimming areas and also removing biomass. For example, you know, we're using it over at Batacuk pretty extensively as part of a remediation plan over there. So I was wondering if you could kind of qualify that statement because I don't want to come to the board in a year and say, can we hydrorake? And it say, no, point to your report and say, it says right there not to use it.
Yeah, well, I wouldn't recommend it for Batacuk because I didn't study Batacuk and it's not that hydroraking isn't something I don't, I wouldn't recommend ever, it's just for the, for the weed issues that were at Lost Lake, it didn't seem to be the wisest choice because of the potential for spreading, fragmenting weeds. It, it's very good on removing water lilies, which have a very large root system, large, almost size of your leg.
Yeah.
So getting in and removing that biomass, which prevents the regrowth in subsequent years, hydroraking's great. It's not really that good for removing sediment. And if it is good at removing sediment, it really is dredging and then it should be permitted as a dredging project. So if they're being, if you're being sold that it's, it's good for removing sediment, it's, it's really, that's dredging. So what it does do is it.
It removes the roots and whatever's attached to the roots, which can be some sediment,
but you're not going to see an appreciable increase in depth as a result of hydroraking.
So just removing that layer, that layer of super organic, real thick muck that the weeds usually root in. muck that the weeds usually root in?
Possibly.
To get down to that, to get down to the nice gravel bog?
Yeah, they won't, yeah, it won't really do that. So if you're being told that, I would, I'd question the vendor a little harder.
So back to your, back to your report, is your comment about not recommending hydroraking specific to weed remediation?
For remediation of fanwort and melfoil within Lost Lake.
It's specific to those two, those two weeds?
Yeah.
Okay.
I do have one last request, and that is Mark puts his thinking hat on, and we can come up with town-printed copies of this and distribute it in some fashion.
What do you think about it? Well, listen, I want to thank you folks...
What you're thinking, you're very creative that way.
I want to thank you folks for coming in, I want to thank you for all the hard work. It certainly, as Jack pointed out, you made this, you dummied it down, but you had all of the high-level information that we needed, and I wish we started with you guys rather than ended.
Well, you could have started and ended.
Yes, but thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Have a good evening. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you.
It's been a long meeting, it's been a long day.
Yeah, but we are going to do your number six in your town manager's report.
Don't you talk all the more.
No.
Thank you very much.
All right. I tried. I know you tried. All right, so at any rate, we are moving on to the annual goals and objectives of the Board of Selectmen. We do have a lot of goals here, let's go through them as quickly as we can, but let's not gloss over anything.
First goals to align employee committee goals and objectives with Board of Selectmen and Town Manager goals, does the board want to keep that?
Do we want to put anything in there about, in the process or the benchmarks or something that departmental action plans and ongoing review of them by the Board of Selectmen?
No, that's Mark's job.
I don't think that's Mark's job.
It is, I set the goals and objectives of the department, that's not the Selectmen. Josh is right. That is my job.
It really is. I mean, not that I'm not interested, Becky, but that's part of his job.
So part of their recommendation was for periodic review on some sort of regular cycle, I think by the Board of Selectmen, but maybe I'm wrong. Is that what you...
Are we talking about the audit?
I am talking about, yes, that recommendation that came out of the Matrix Audit, should that get included into this?
Isn't that the goal under 1B? That's 1B. We're talking about 1A first.
I understand that.
So why don't we put it under 1B since it specifically says incorporating the results of the Matrix Audit Review into that particular goal?
Well, because the depart, wait.
Let us spend some more time on goals.
Okay. I'll drop this if nobody else thinks it's important.
I think what Becky's saying is 1B is good, it commits us to doing something about the Matrix Audit, but I think you're saying, let's assure that individual employees' goals and objectives reflect the need to do that. Is that correct?
I guess so.
I gotta read this in that timing.
I thought it was an interesting recommendation from the Matrix Report to have the departments create their own action plans. I don't want that to be in conflict with them aligning their goals and objectives with us. I think that if we aligned with that, that would be good, but I, I'm okay with the way it's written.
You know what, if our, if we adopt 1, and if our goals and objectives end up flowing down to the Town Manager and then to employees, and then if we adopt 1B, 1B will flow down to employees.
Okay, okay, I agree.
Barry, did you hear something on 1B?
Before you get off 1A, are you accepting 1A as a goal?
Yes.
Anybody object, might be an easier way of getting through this.
Allison?
I'm okay with 1A.
1A, Barry?
It's fine.
Next, 1B.
1B, develop strategic plan for the Town of Groton, including incorporating the results of the Matrix Audit Review.
I think, I think 1A is the wrong way to go about doing things, but it's not going to matter, so.
1B reads well to me.
1B is actually challenging the way it's written, because we may not be able to include results of the Matrix Operational Audit Review, because we just heard them say that the Matrix Audit Review is not a strategic document. So if there's no strategic...
Appropriate.
If there's no strategic value in a document, there's no point to include a strategic document.
Can you remove the word strategic and say appropriate findings?
Well, as long as we change the title as well.
I think 1B was probably a combination of a couple of Selectmen's objectives, Mark, was it not? Because I remember I had a specific...
I got a lot of comments on this one, and I tried to incorporate everything into a cohesive, coherent sentence.
So there was one specific objective that says, take the matrix, the outcome of the Matrix Audit, and make sure that it's somehow acted on. And that's what I meant when I said, if we adopt this one, it will flow into 1A. If we combine this with a strategic plan, it becomes, they become tied, a strategic plan and the Matrix Audit, which, as Barry points out, are not necessarily made for each other.
But if you don't mention the Matrix Audit someplace in our goals, that seems like we've spent a lot of money and gotten some really good information and then dropped...
Why? Because just because it's not our goals doesn't mean we don't do it. The goals are just there as things we're going to achieve above and beyond maybe the normal operating procedures of what we do.
Okay, but are you, so Barry, back to the question Josh asked you on the process, if that sentence said, the strategic plan that incorporates the appropriate findings from the Matrix Operational Audit, would that be okay?
So here's my recommendation, in line with what you're saying, strike the second part of 1B, so it ends with a period after the Town of Groton. And then we can massage the language within the other two any way you want, you know, and actually, if we want to be realistic, and Mr. Brogan came up with a great idea, it should also, it should also use the...
Sustainability Budget?
Yeah, the Sustainable Budget Committee Report as part of its, as a reference document as well. So, I mean, there's going to be lots of reference documents used in this, so I'm okay with, if you want to make sure that the Matrix Operational Audit is reviewed, that's actually, we've already discussed that it's going to happen, so there's no problem with putting it in there. I just don't want to have the word incorporate, because that may not happen.
So if we take out the second part of the...
Just put a period after the word Groton.
Yep, okay, but then we do say it down here in the process.
I'm taking out, it's just develop strategic plan for the Town of Groton, period?
Yes.
That's the goal?
But then in the process to meet the goal, that last sentence of that paragraph is going to say that incorporates the appropriate, drop the word strategic, findings from the Matrix Operational Audit and the Sustainable Budget Report, Committee Report.
Yes.
How about, how about we change the word incorporates to references?
Reference.
I have to say that if we don't have a specific objective that says we will, we will act on the Matrix Audit and the recommendations made in it, that we risk forgetting about this, and that there is value in having a quarterly review that says, where are we with regard to the Matrix Audit recommendations? I think there's real, it's a valuable standalone objective.
Fine, make it, make it a second.
If it means that we have to have another objective, it's easy to administer.
I concur with you. It's just, it's not necessarily tied to strategic plan.
Right, it's, I think it's completely independent. This strategic plan may care about it.
We do.
But it should be a standalone objective. Are we, are we not on track with a plan to execute on the Matrix Audit, period? That should be...
Can I ask a question? Can I ask a question on this whole strategic plan? We've already started that, last year's goal, and you're going to finish it. So why do we need to put it on the following year's goals? Just make this incorporate or continue to monitor the results of the audit, and don't mention strategic plan. You guys are already doing it.
Well, to the extent, well, we haven't done it, and so it hasn't been accomplished, and to the extent that...
But you started it.
Yeah, we start a lot of things and stop them, to the extent that a strategic plan is important, we should have it as an objective and follow on it, report on its progress.
What's the hangup about having so many goals? I don't get that.
There shouldn't be a hangup on it.
Well, at a certain point, depending on who's, you know, it can be unmanageable depending on...
Look, just make a standalone goal that says what Jack just said about the audit, he's absolutely right, I don't want that audit to gather dust, I want it, I want it, it's important. So the goal is to implement recommendations from the Matrix Audit, that's the name of it. Process to meet the goal, hold quarterly agenda items to monitor progress against recommendations.
Establish a plan and hold quarterly updates on the plan, status on the plan.
It's a little uncomfortable to me to set a goal around following up on something that we haven't actually reviewed formally along with the department responses.
Well, that's why Jack said establish a plan, and if that plan says we reject everything in it, then there's really not much to follow.
Absolutely.
I think Jack's broad stroke at this late, not because of flagging, but just because of the reality where we're at, is sufficient in that we may pitch the whole, we're not going to pitch the whole thing, but you know what I mean? It's not telling us that we have to put the whole audit, it's saying that we're going to formulate a plan, which we already intend to do, and then we can go after those things in the plan as part of a quarterly view. Is that...
I'm fine with that.
Okay.
These are not my ones to hit hard.
You got that? All right, so we corrected 1B.
We're taking out the references from here, and we're putting it in a separate goal.
Yes. 1C, I think it speaks for itself.
Can I just ask?
You don't, it's okay.
What are these dates here for? This is a goal that is going to be ready for town meeting a year and a half from now? Is that intentional here?
That was my concern as well. I think that this all needs to be presented and accomplished in 2018. I don't...
So move fiscal 2020 to fiscal 19 and move April to 2018.
That basically means that we're done with this goal in March.
Good, then we've accomplished the goal.
Well, who, where did this goal originate? I mean, the part...
This might have been...
No, the benchmark part about the operational budget priorities and capital budget priorities, is this a change from what we've been doing, or is this the same as what we've been doing?
Mark, you rewrote this, didn't you?
See, I think it was rewritten.
The benchmark?
I had written one benchmark, and then this is a tweaked version of it.
I mean, if this...
I got input, and I tried to incorporate input. I can go print out all the input and guys still look at it, but trust me, those dates are what you guys gave me. If you don't want those dates, let's change the dates.
So who wanted them like that?
Well, they're...
I mean, who wants, is there a defense for these numbers? I'm just saying.
No, it should, I think it should be, as Allison...
If I remember the original discussion, the way you put in the, the way you're going to go about doing this, I've already done the fiscal 19 budget. You're going to get it on Friday, or two weeks from now. So how can you tell me what the priorities are into an operating budget you're already going to receive in two weeks? That's why the dates are the way they are.
So does this goal envision that we are going to do something different than we are already doing?
Yeah, I mean, currently, I don't think there's any plan that works together the capital and operating.
Take a deep breath, everybody. Go and get through this, too.
So, I mean, I am new to this. I'm unclear if there's some big change that is envisioned here from what current practices, or if this is basically just what we have been doing.
It's to continue to strengthen the relationship, and the reason that the dates are the way they are is you build the FY '20 budget in the fall of FY '19. So it happens during calendar year 2018.
Okay, I got the dates part.
Okay.
This part about the, to integrate operational budget priorities and the capital budget priorities into a cohesive plan, is that a new idea?
Yes, because we just established the capital budget of the school district, and we just funded it at the spring town meeting, fall town meeting.
Okay.
So it is new.
All right, then, I'm okay with it.
Next.
So I'm still, I understand why it needs to be part of the 2020 budget, but I think that the cohesive combined document needs to be presented at this spring town meeting. I think waiting a year and a half at this point is...
I don't know if we'll be ready for the spring town meeting, Allison.
Why couldn't that be ready?
Well, because the capital budget of the school department has already been, we've funded it, it's going to be in the operating budget for them. Well, maybe, I guess...
Maybe they have a long-term...
And so do I.
I guess what I'm looking for isn't necessarily the prioritization or the budgeting piece of it, so much as a cohesive document that merges them together so that the community can look at and assess the priorities on a whole, as opposed to, here are some school district things, here are some town things, and then we can start...
The only problem with that is the school department's capital budget is beholden to the Town of Dunstable as well as the Town of Groton, while the Groton capital budget is for the Town of Groton. So it's very difficult to stop prioritizing things if Dunstable's not going to fund those things. So I have a hard time, I have, I'm totally against incorporating our capital needs into the school's capital needs. You know, we'll try to fund it the way we can, we'll try to put money in the budget as we did this year.
I think if we don't prioritize it and talk about when we're going to fund it and how we're going to fund it, because Dunstable isn't having similar conversations, then we're never going to get it funded.
I disagree with you. We funded it this fall without talking to Dunstable.
I don't think that Allison's talking about prioritizing them now. I think she's talking about that when we present at fall, at spring town meeting, and I apologize if I'm, I'm just trying to reiterate what I heard, is if we present a more cohesive outline of what's in the budget, not necessarily what we prioritize or not, but what's in the budget, as these are the capital needs for Groton, and they involve some things for the school, and these are the operational needs for Groton, they involve some things for the school, it takes away that separation of what is, this is the school budget, this is the municipal budget.
It's a separate district, they're not part of the municipal budgets. This isn't, this isn't, these are all regional school districts. This isn't...
You're trying to...
I'm trying to...
Wellesley.
This isn't Littleton, where the, where the, the school capital budget is part of the town's overall capital budget, and there are priorities put into place based on school and town needs. That can't happen with a regional school district. As much as we want to do that, we can't. And that's just my opinion.
It absolutely has to happen that way.
I don't see how it does.
If we on the town side don't start to incorporate meeting some of the needs of the district, whether they're capital or otherwise, they're always going to appear as a sudden surprise, and we're never going to meet them.
But I personally think that if we fund the stabilization fund, whether it's the municipal stabilization fund for the district, or our portion that is requested on a year or a year basis by the district with their internal capital stabilization fund collectively, then if we're meeting the obligation for the capital plan for the schools within a year in setting aside those funds, then I think that that's the best we're able to do without being beholden to Dunstable's whims.
You know, we're trying to incorporate the needs of the schools, we've been doing it for the last couple of years, there's been significant appropriations to the school district at the, at the peril of the municipal operating budget. This year, I'm being told that I have to come in with a budget at 3%, and the assessment to the, to the Groton-Dunstable Regional School District is going up 5.66%, and I think it's hurting the municipal operation, but we're doing it. So we are addressing the needs of the Groton-Dunstable. We appropriated $846,000 for their capital needs at the fall town meeting. So I'm troubled by the thought to saying we're dismissing and we're not prioritizing the needs of the school district. That's absolutely not the case. Look at the, look at the fall town meeting warrant. Look at the budget I'm going to give you in two weeks.
And I think if we present an endpoint capital budget that goes forward five or 10 years and doesn't talk about things like Florence roach, that we're being irresponsible.
Florence roach, there will be an article on the spring town meeting warrant seeking $750,000 for Florence roach.
Absolutely.
We are addressing the needs of the schools. We are.
Why can't we include them in some sort of budget document?
So why do we rely on the details now compared to where we need to be in a budget ob, a budget or objectives discussion?
I love having this.
Can you get us on track here?
I'm trying to get us on track, and I think that there's a fundamental philosophical difference between what Allison's saying, what Mark's saying, and I'm leaning more towards what Mark's saying, but I understand what you're saying, Allison. And I think that we need to adopt a formal stance and policy, no, that's the next one. Excuse me. I personally am fine with this the way it is.
Allison, did you want something rewritten here in this benchmark?
I'm not sure that it matters. I think that an integrated overview should be presented in April of 2018, but if we're not going to get an integrated document that includes the needs of the district, I'm fighting a losing battle.
Well, but, and so to take what you and Mark are saying, there is, there is some Well, but, but, and, and so to take what you and Mark are saying, there is a, there is some subsection of the GD capital budget that is only Groton, where we would be funding 100% of it. Perhaps there's a compromise there where we can, we, we can't, we can't do anything about the stuff that's at the high school and that may be both. We can, we can highlight, we can, we can say its possibilities will be here, but there are items that are fully GD, fully Groton portions that we do know about that may exist within the, the, the-
Capital plan.
The capital plan for the schools create, the school committee has created. Perhaps as a first step, we can work on incorporating the only Groton items as a first pass, as a, as a, as a friendly exercise to see how that looks in our Groton capital plan, so that it, it shows up that we're treating Groton's capital needs equally across the board from the students all the way up to the, the seniors, if I, if I can say that that way.
And then at some point in the future, if Dunstable funds something that we haven't even mentioned to our community as an existing capital need?
I'm saying as a starting point, you're right, there's something, there's more in there, but as a starting point, we can at least identify those Groton-only items, and then we can take as a second pass the, the, the possibilities of these things that, that are going to be needed that are combined. And this may be a three or four iterative, step iterative approach. It's easier to start with a document that's wholly Groton and then add to that items that are, that are, that are potentially Groton.
This is a capital funding philosophy wrapped it, wrapped it, wrapped it a, wrapped it in a-
In a goal and objective.
A goal and objective, and we, and we should, we should strip it out and come back to it because we're not going to solve it here in this objective. We are basically arguing about our capital planning needs and saying that it's about a working relationship with the school committee. They're two different things.
So why don't we put it on agenda item for late January, early February, something like that?
So just, do we just take this goal out or would we-
Take the goal out right now.
What? Take the whole goal off?
Take the goal out and put it on for, uh, put it on for the 19, 20, 21st of January, please. For the agenda.
Is that acceptable, Allison?
Put this goal back on. I don't want to push it off so it disappears. Put it on for the 21st of January meeting.
The goal here?
Goal 1C to discuss this then so we can move on. Come up with some proposed language, please. I'd be happy to work on that with you, if you want.
Okay.
Okay.
It's actually the 22nd of January.
22nd of January, I apologize.
Formal stance, policy, and process regarding recreational marijuana, that thing's well underway. I hope we can leave it.
Do we need it as an objective?
Yes.
There you go. Next, and any questions, issues? None, hearing none. Next.
Create inventory of undeveloped and vacant commercial parcels.
This is repetitive to what the EDC is doing, and I don't think we need it on this.
First, oh, yeah, that's fine. I'm, I'm going to withdraw this. I'm going to come back, I'd like to come back to the board with a preliminary study that just demonstrates some observations, and it'll take a little bit of time. We'll do it in February or March.
Okay, so that's coming off of you?
Yeah.
Uh, create formalized policies to ensure committees are in compliance with the open meeting law?
Yeah, starting with us.
The only note I had on this one is that it's the second, the last line where it says exceptions for minutes. I think it should say expectations.
Oh, yes.
Oh, yeah.
Throwing that out there.
Good catch.
Expectations.
So I had a-
Thank you, Allison.
I read that, too.
But I-
Pop right on.
I thought we should include also the conflict of interest training in this.
Why?
That's required, no, that is- That is required by law.
Well, so is all this, so is open meeting law and public records. When we're talking about creating policies to make sure that people adhere to them.
It's the town clerk's responsibility to make sure you take the conflict of interest training, not the selectmen's.
Isn't it also the town clerk's responsibility that you-
No.
No, specifically-
For open meetings.
Chief Executive Office.
Specifically, the conflict of interest law is the, is the town clerk's. The Board of Selectmen voted to give that to the town clerk.
Did you all do your conflict of interest trainings?
Yes.
Good, see?
And the OML is only, I mean, it, yes, we have to take effort to avoid, to, to be in compliance, but compliance issues only arise upon a complaint versus conflict of interest training, I think is mandatory or else you-
This, every two years?
Or else you can't hold office, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
I think this is good. 1F.
Okay, 2A, engage with and assist with nonprofit agent leasing the Prescott so that no taxpayer funds accepted of CPC are expended on this project.
Okay, I object to that wording. I would pre, I'd like to suggest to say, engage with and assist the nonprofit agent leasing the Prescott School to advance the use of and promote the success of the Prescott School as a sustainable mixed-use community center.
I can't take shorthand.
I got it written down. I'll send it to you.
Senator, please.
No, to me, this is a goal, this is a goal that I want.
I think the way this is written is just, it-
What do you think?
It ties our hands in ways that just invite a whole lot of problems down the road. We cannot predict the outcome of this meeting tomorrow.
This is this year's goal.
Yeah, this, this could mean that, no, we're not sending Tom Blaney over there to fix a broken window on a building that we own.
We could, you know, this could mean the town manager can't-
Exactly what it can do.
Can't, can't spend any time with the oversight committee.
Yeah, this is just-
Okay, I, I, that, that point is taken. However, the other way encumbers us to do everything we can to ensure the success of someone we've given authority to, to, or ownership of making it successful. So there has to be a middle ground. I, I accept that, that reality. I accept how this could be interpreted that way. It wasn't the intent of the writing. However, the way it was originally written encumbered the board to, it covered me to quit my job, so I had to go and make sure Prescott School was successful. That's how it encumbered me. In the same way, in the same manner that that, that these wording meant what you said, it's the same exact side and the other side. So there has to be a middle ground that basically says we want, you know, we're-
With the exception of routine maintenance as required and the support of the-
But if I'm not mistaken, the goal, of the goal, as I've heard Ms. Petropolis say, it is to avoid, avoid expending, avoid having, I'll say, having warrant articles that were, that would do money on the, on the, on the building or something like that. That's what I've always understood was this was to be a self-sustaining operation.
Absolutely.
You know, that's actually a great, great point, to, to help Prescott become a self-sustaining community asset.
That's what I said, sustainable mixed-use community.
If you put a period after the word "school" in Prescott School in the beginning of the sentence, put a period there.
Engage with and assist the nonprofit agent leasing the Prescott School.
Period. Okay, provide-
Where, where are you? I'm sorry.
Put a period after the word "school."
In the headline?
In the, in the-
In the bold, yeah.
Exactly, in the bold area. Put a period after Prescott School, okay? And then, um, provide maintenance as required to the building, routine maintenance as required for the building, and that, that's a given. Why does that have to be said? But you could just say-
Yeah, why are you saying it?
You could just, so fine, so you could say ensure that no taxpayer funds except that of the CPC are expended on the project. What is wrong with saying that?
Josh, aside from what I'm thinking about, what you're doing right now, which I don't really particularly like, why don't we just say, we'll make this, make the Prescott School Community Center a self-sustaining, against the goal of making the Prescott Community Self-Center a self-sustaining asset for the town?
I'm not at all comfortable meeting at that open.
I don't think we should use the word "community center," by the way, ever.
Oh.
The town has never voted that we should have a community center, and unless we want to go to town meeting and allow, and say that we should authorize a community center, we should not have that in a selectmen's document.
It allows the designated nonprofit to succeed at the Prescott School, remove and creating a community center.
I'm absolutely fine with allowing them to succeed, and I think that we, we do have an obligation for routine maintenance and things. Beyond that, I think that the wording of this opens the door down the line for a lot of back and forth within the committee and with the public in terms of whether we did what we should have, whether we did too much, whether we didn't do enough. I think we've made it pretty clear in, in wording up till now that, you know, the Board of Selectmen work in conjunction with the approved nonprofit agency on, to review their business pla- I mean, we're not-
Yeah, no, that's-
If they do, if they do the things that are spelled out in, in the agreement, then we're good. This, to me, puts an impetus on us to engage with them and assist to get them over the line, and that's-
We have, we've appointed a committee, okay?
Mm-hmm.
That is reviewing the business plan and working with it, and-
No, not working with it.
They haven't done anything yet.
Reviewing it.
They're doing it.
Reviewing it.
Reviewing it.
They haven't done anything yet.
If we've, I'm sorry, if we've appointed the committee, what are we asking the Board? Let me, let me ask this a more direct way so I can get some information. What is the intent asking the Board of Selectmen to do with this? That's what I'd like to understand. What are you asking the Board of Selectmen to do that the Prescott School Oversight Committee is not already going to do?
Uh, I think two different intents. We're asking the Board of Selectmen to help the Prescott Oversight Committee, oh, sorry, to help Friends-
Friends of Prescott.
To be successful at what they're doing without making Friends, without making the Prescott Initiative a burden to the town.
Fine. I like what you just said.
But what does that mean?
A financial burden.
Financial burden to the town. You know, it's open to interpretation, Allison, and unless we, unless we put an actual dollar amount here, it always will be open to interpretation.
Jack, I don't mind the Selectmen stepping up to the plate to help the Friends in any way they can, whether it be grant opportunities or whether it be you or I stepping up to the plate to teach a class to help them raise money, okay? But it's a whole nother story in my book for a nonprofit entity that wants to succeed. They can apply for the CPC and Town Meeting can grant them money if they get the votes, but I don't want to see it become part of the reoccurring expense budget for the town above and beyond that which requires maintenance for a town-owned facility.
You know, Josh, I think we have that option. I think that there's some agreement that, that we will get there, but in, in year one, we, it might not be the case. So we might spend some money on Press, on the Prescott School in year one just as we spent some money on the country club in year one on our way to a five-year plan of self-sustaining. So how we get there is still open to discussion. Tying our hands is a bad idea. A shared objective of where we want to be, I think, we should certainly come up with.
I think one of the main differences, though, between the two is that Town Meeting voted to authorize the town to have the country club, and therefore it became almost a legislative, uh, validation to, to be, have to spend money to get it to that point, and it was in fact, you know, lost money for many years and it was on many people's cut lists, but Town Meeting had selected it. Unfortunately, in this case, we, because of a flawed, uh, no fault of anybody else, it's just some information came later. We had a flawed RFP process, and the Board has acted on its own to assign a nonprofit, to enlist the assistance of a nonprofit agency to lease and manage the building. We certainly want them to succeed. I just don't understand how to word a goal where it neither encumbers nor restricts.
Well, so I guess I, I want to first of all say it is everyone's goal to have this not cost money to the town. As far as there not being a town meeting vote, partly what I see is to support this process over, so that over a period of years, we can get to a point where we may in fact go before the town for a major renovation of the building and funding of it in whatever creative ways can be managed at that point. So, yeah, we don't have a town meeting vote. I guess I, the reason that I would like us to take a statement is just to make it, give it that credibility, that this is something that the Selectmen actually want to succeed. It's not like we're saying, well, you know, we're at arms-length yet, you do it and, and we want you to succeed, but we're going to make you do all of the work all by yourself. I'd, I'd rather it be a partnership.
I'm sorry, why shouldn't they do the work by themselves? Hold, let me finish now. With the assistance and the help of the Board of Selectmen and the town manager, in its sink or swim, okay? You have a business plan. We try and help you any way we can in terms of succeeding through speaking with us, coming before the Board, whether it be teaching opportunities, once the school district offices move out of that building, then we're going to have to do the custodial work. We're going to have to fix the burner if the burner breaks. We're going to have to pay for the heat. We're going to have to do certain things in conjunction with Friends. However, if Friends' business plan doesn't work and this thing doesn't work, as far as I'm concerned, we gave it our best effort. But I don't want to see us throwing money and having it become part of the budget above and beyond that which the school district is currently covering. Somebody's got to cover that, and that has to be done in concert with the Friends paying some sort of escalating rent, and that's what needs to be negotiated.
And I think, to me, that if, if Friends were to come to us and say, we're applying for a grant, we're this, we're that, will you sign on to it? Do you support us? I could, I, for me, by and large, the answer would be absolutely, but this is very open. Even the benchmark of a formal lease, there are any number of reasons that that's, might not happen. And I don't want it left so open that-
So look, I think, are we all agree that we want Friends to be, the Friends Initiative to, to result in a self-sustaining asset for the community? Are we all in agreement with that?
Yes.
Is that, is that ambiguous? Self-sustaining asset, I mean, okay. So why don't we just have our goal is to assist Friends to become a self-sustaining asset to the community?
Assist with what?
And assist with whatever their needs are. It doesn't, that doesn't encumber us in any way. It doesn't, it doesn't encumber us at all. It also doesn't limit us to not spending a penny. It says that we will do what we can, and at the end of the day, if we decide that, if Marx wants to put in $10,000 to help Prescott, Town Meeting gets to say yes or no. Just like with the country club, Town Meeting gets to say yes or no.
That's true.
Right? And so there's no encumbrance here. It just expresses a philosophy. We're going to help these folks to get-
And it's not a goal. If it's a philosophy, but doesn't encumber anything, this is-
It's not measurable, it's not actionable, it's not time-bound.
Well, the lease part is measurable and actionable.
But assist is not-
So ultimately, if, if, if they can't resolve the current issues that exist and there's no lease that's signed, we have no way to meet our goal.
Right. Not, I, it's not a problem. I mean, everybody agrees, it can't be met. We set it as a goal, we didn't achieve it. And we didn't achieve it for reasons that are defensible to everybody.
Well, wait, except for, except for what tends to happen in documents like this is Selectmen will get, Selectmen will have a differing opinion on how far to go on a certain item, and that's what we want to have happen. That's why we have five members with a little bit of diversity. And what can this, what can happen is, and has happened in the past before my time, is that a goal was, a goal can be used to say, well, you agreed to this.
Right.
And, and that's a little bit of a challenge, and that's why some goals that are not specific enough maybe should not be on this list. And right now, what I'm hearing is two people really want this, this, something like this on the, on the list and one person is fine with some variance as long as it's, it's, it's challenging, and perhaps two who are really uncomfortable with having this on the list at all. Not that that means, and I understand your point, Becky, that we want to make a statement. I don't necessarily know that being on the Selectmen's goals creates that statement. We make that statement by being transparent about the process, by supporting the, the, the initiatives to, to, to create a lease and by working through and understanding the issues, by inviting the Friends to communicate with us and enabling the Prescott Advisory Board, I apologize if I got that wrong, to, to do their job or to come with us because they, there's things that they need help with. Everybody's clear that there's already a couple Selectmen, three Selectmen clearly, who've already contributed and helped incredibly to Friends' success through offering classes or a constant drumbeat of support here at meetings. So I don't think that that's at, at issue.
So why don't you just make the goal that the Selectmen will help the Friends of Prescott help themselves?
Yeah, because it's-
I'm telling you, I don't know what it means.
It's so ambiguous, it doesn't-
As far as I'm concerned, I would rather see it go away.
Absolutely.
You don't, so you're saying you just don't want any goal above Prescott?
I have a goal to help them to succeed, but I don't think, I think we've made that abundantly clear, that we want to try and make this work. I personally don't think we need to make this a goal.
And there's a plan in place to track it and move it along?
And with that said, uh-
Like, there is a plan in place to track it?
With the Prescott Advisory Board.
Yes, there is.
The oversight committee, which, but I don't think-
There is, and we're working on a lease, and we're, we're working on negotiating a lease. All that's in place. What do you think, we're just, if it's not a goal, it's just, oh, we're just going to walk away from it? Look at the look you're giving me.
It's just on a rough, it's getting-
I, I say it, I say it's off. I, I say, I say it's off. On or off? On or off?
Well, I mean, you know, when I look at the other goals that we've got here
On or off? On or off, Becky?
Why do we have a goal that says continue to develop
It's off.
A strong working relationship with the school committee? If we don't have a goal that says, in essence, develop a strong working relationship with the Friends of Prescott, so that they can
There is a vote, consensus.
Turn this asset, this building into an asset.
Your chairman, you should know how to do this.
Oh, come on now.
I move that the goal 2A be removed from the 2018 Selectmen's Goals and Objectives.
What's the point of these goals?
Motion's been made and seconded, further discussion?
I, I guess I, I'm unclear what's the point of goals.
We're never going to resolve this tonight because there's a fundamental philosophical difference.
Well, okay, we don't have to, we don't have to say it's not going to be a goal, we could say we need to come back and think about this some more.
Move it to January 22nd then, please, with the other one removed, okay?
I would actually ask that it be moved to the week after that, I'm probably not going to be here on the 22nd.
Move it to January 3rd, 29th, please.
We have a motion on the table, it needs to be withdrawn.
I withdraw my motion, thank you, thank you, that's a good way to save, having a chance to save it. 3A, enhance the concept of performance-based compensation. I believe, Mark, you're already working on the collective bargaining portion of
I did that on there, it's in process.
Does anybody have any problem with this?
Negative, I think it's great.
Hold on, Allison has her hand up.
I have some concern that if this implies anything about the structure of a base versus a bonus, that moving toward a bonus structure may be problematic in the future.
It may be.
That's why, why we need this, Mark understands this stuff and can come up with a good plan.
Right now, the bonus structure gets added to the base, so looking at this from another lens allows this to move forward in this fashion, and if it ends up being problematic, we're going to find out through collective bargaining.
I have no problem with this exactly as it's written, I don't know what else is implied or inferred by others within it, so that's fine.
So we're all good with this then, and we'll find out where we land? Yes?
Perhaps tomorrow if you go to Fin Company with your mouth closed.
No, I don't think I can do that.
I'm asking that 3B be removed from the
Withdrawn.
Thank you.
There you go, that was easy. 3C
Please keep this, it's already in process.
The wording, everybody's good with it, I think it makes sense to me.
I rewrote it a little bit.
The benchmark is awfully
Awfully, awfully specific, isn't it? That's because there's things, that's because there's things in process, all of this process.
Really specific, okay, because I read it, and if you're comfortable with it, it's your baby.
Yeah.
3D, develop agreed-upon OPEB funding strategy.
Good. I think it needs to be in there.
Okay, except that should say develop AN, A-N, not A-N-D, agreed upon.
Oh, I'm sorry, yep, you're right.
Um
Yes?
I guess I missed the part where this came about, and, and we've had so many go back and forth in OPEB, but I'm fine with it as a goal, we've, we've kind of addressed it, if Allison's okay with it, I'm okay, because she's going to handle this beast.
I mean, I think the first step is just to identify and make everyone aware of what the needs are on the two sides, you know, the two different entities, and then again, like the capital to present it in some sort of unified plan.
Yeah.
Okay. And then you guys added the one last week, so that's, Jack wrote that, that's exactly what the board voted last week.
I'm completely fine with that.
And then the final one is the affordable housing.
With 3E?
We are on 3E.
That's the one you guys voted last week.
Jack wrote this language.
Is this language iterated on, is that something that other people are familiar with as a phrase? I've never heard it.
Doesn't iterated mean speak?
No, iterated means you have one version and you update it, or you adopt it, or you move it forward.
Iterated on, I'm asking about the use of this term, iterated on.
It is commonly used, it may not be correct, what it typically means is
I understood it, sorry.
It might just be the environment that we work in, so it simply means that someone comes forward, says, here's a plan, people say, hey, I, I like parts one and two, but part three sucks, and so you come back with a revised part three.
Sort of like what we're doing on these goals.
Yeah.
Well, hopefully more productive.
Final goal?
Anybody object to this?
No.
No, I think it's a good goal.
I think iterated on is perfect, I think.
I like this goal a lot, and I'm very much in support of 4A, and I actually would like to thank whichever Select person
Becky?
Brought this forward, because I think it's a critical issue facing our town, and it's going to get worse as things go on.
Will you stick my name on that? May I work on that with you, Becky?
Sure.
Since I'm working
My only question on this is whether we want to be looking at housing that is smaller and less expensive, kind of across the border for other entities as well, I'm not sure why we want to restrict it only to seniors.
Because they don't have kids for the school system?
Where enrollment is at a low and we need more kids? I don't, I'm not sure why we would identify in our goal only to look at smaller, less expensive housing for seniors.
Yeah, I wrote it because I, that's the cohort of the population that I am aware of, that, I have also heard that there's a need for smaller family housing in Groton. We could just say
How about we move the word seniors, less expensive for Residents who wish to dance us.
The whole thing is based on
I mean, I get where you're going, Becky.
I don't, I don't think you can't have this, I don't think you can't have it this way and then not add things to it later, I think this identifies, like, there's an 80/20 where there's a prior rule you should apply to things, 80% of this stuff is going to be this, 20% is going to be the other side where there's, there's lower income and smaller housing needed for other people, but I, I think that if you start with the biggest chunk, which is the seniors, and then as a secondary phase, you can apply much of the same work or similar parts of that work to, to lower-income families, you might get through it. I just don't know that it, I, I'm okay with the way it is, but I understand the concept.
What is the current, and I don't know that anybody knows
5.7
Is there any, what, affordable housing? In terms of market demand? I know, I know that, anecdotally, there's a lot of demand for low-income, smaller
Over 55 house, senior housing did not have a very big market. My understanding, and
Doing better?
My understanding is, and I, off to some reading and nothing concrete, I'll ask Fran Stanley to look into it, because she's the housing coordinator for the, for the town, and see if it's doing better.
Okay.
Okay? But it wasn't doing well, five years ago, six years ago.
It wasn't, and it, it was hard to find developers who would even build it.
Dave Moulton's in the process of building one right now
Absolutely.
Behind Shaw's, so I'll, I'll get you that answer, but for now, I think if we can leave it as seniors and then expand it, I think, I'm okay with it.
That's probably the best approach.
We all good with this one?
Yeah, I think, I think the senior part's easier to understand.
So, so I, with the language changes tonight, a motion to approve the 2018 Board of Selectmen's Goals and Objectives, with the other two that we proposed moving off to January table for now, that's a motion.
And what was the first one that we were going to move to January?
We moved Prescott, and we moved 1B, was it?
The School Committee.
School Committee.
So how many goals does this give us at this point?
Plus two more potentially.
It feels like 42.
It does, because some of them were
It feels like 42.
Okay, so
I'll send out the
Hold on a sec, there's a motion on the table, it's been seconded, further discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
There you go.
I have a question in other business.
I count 13.
Oh, I'm in 10.
Then it's 13.
I have a question before our meeting is over.